Good evening. This is the Dania Beach City Commission Regular Meeting. It is Tuesday, January 14, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Llewellyn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Oddman.
Here.
Commissioner Brandimart.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney White.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And will you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. Next up, we have presentations and special event approvals. First item is Walmart Pharmacy Public Service Announcement presented by A.J. Ubaki? Ubak? That's it. Pharmacist requested by Commissioner Harris.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Ubak. I'm the pharmacy manager at your local neighborhood market pharmacy. I'd like to start off by thanking the City Commission and the community of Dania Beach for having me here today. Dania Beach, the first city in Broward, so that thing's awesome and unique. But I'm here today to give you a public service announcement on the flu activity and the flu vaccine. So as of January 4th, the CDC states that we're in an area of high flu activity. There have been 9.7 million cases of the flu so far nationwide, with 87,000 hospitalizations and 4,800 deaths. Thirty-two of those unfortunately have been pediatric. So that is why it is important that we are vaccinated against the flu. The flu vaccine can actually reduce pediatric hospitalization by 50% and secondary complications such as pneumonia by 36%. So again, I urge everyone to get their flu vaccine. It is not too late. For those who have already been vaccinated, we thank you. Not only are you protecting yourselves, but you're protecting those around you, including those with chronic health conditions, pregnant women, children, and the elderly. So I'd like to thank you for having me here today and letting me speak to you about the flu activity and the flu vaccine. And you guys have a wonderful evening. Get your flu shots.
Thank you. We will not be having the update from Randy on the Dania Beach Chamber of Commerce. Unfortunately, she's not feeling well tonight. Dania Beach Walkers Club Awards.
Hello.
Hello.
And good evening.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Anthony Afetti, Superintendent of Parks and Recreation for the City of Dania Beach. Pretty much, I'm up here to give out two awards to two gentlemen who have came along as far as our Walkers Club. And, you know, they've done a lot. They've put in a lot of effort, more than anybody else that I've seen, that has, you know, taken part in the Walkers Club. Pretty much, the Walkers Club is a program that was put into place to keep our community active and on the move. Our motto within PNR is health is wealth, and we as a city love to promote wellness. Not only do we offer Walkers Club for the patrons in the community, we also offer for the employees within the city as a part of the wellness program. On the behalf of Parks and Recreation, I would like to present these Walker of the Year Awards to Mr. Calvin Williams and Mr. Ricky Young for being our 2019 Walkers of the Year. They have completed over 2 million steps. Two million. These two gentlemen have left their cars at home. They're not giving us any more footprints, but they're walking everywhere. I actually saw both gentlemen leaving Daniel Point with bags in their hands instead of driving, so they've taken this challenge to a whole nother level.
Awesome. Awesome, awesome. Where'd you get these? These? This one's good. I did not know there's such a thing as a Walkers Club, I swear to God. Yeah. Senior's Walking Club.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
Thank you very much.
Yes, I am from that neighborhood, and so I see them walking every day. And not only is it something to promote wellness, it's also because Mr. Ricky Young is a Reverend and he's a pastor, it's also something that promotes safety and strong men that are doing the right thing in our communities. And so I thank you for showing our kids that health is wealth, as the back of your shirt says. Also, from getting a couple of cars off the street, but for being mentors and leaders in our community. So thank you. And the next time that we do our wellness challenge, I'm probably going to put my Fitbit on one of you all. 2 million steps.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next is a special event request from Dania Beach Lions Club for their fifth annual Moonlight Classic Car Show to be held at Frost Park on February 22nd, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Applicant is requesting special event fee waiver of $150, porta toilets for Frost Park, and BSO police escort and security detail for the event. Are there any issues?
Not at all. We support.
Did you want to speak?
I just want to come and say thank you to the city manager and the staff.
You need to identify yourself for the record.
Huh?
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim Silvernell, President of the Dania Beach Lions Club, Nicholas James Casilla Scholarship Fund. And this is our fifth year doing it. We used to do it on the beach, but with the marina growing, with all the boats and cars, we couldn't do that anymore, so we moved to Frost Park. I just want to come and say thank you to everybody because we know everybody's in motorcycle mode coming up here in the next couple of weeks, but we had to get this done because we do this for the scholarship fund. It's a family night. It's night and day between the motorcycle show. I'm just telling you that right now, okay? So come on out, see a class car. I have Cobra Joe from Cobra Joe Productions, who's also a member of the Lions Club, that puts on these shows like this. So it's always a class act, and if it's a problem, come see me. He gets all the awards. I get all the, I get all the, anybody's have a complaint, come see me. So I thank you all very much.
Do we have a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And it is a nice event. Last year, it was very, very well attended and nicely done. I know you will. Next item is special event request by the City of Dania Beach to have various Martin Luther King Junior Day activities throughout the city on January 18th and 20th, 2020. The applicant is requesting the following: special event fee waiver of $150, porta toilets for CW Thomas Park, BSO police escort detail for the parade, and BSO security detail at CW Thomas Park for the festivities. Any issues?
Madam Mayor, we have that approved by your budget, and we are working with them, and we support.
Move the item?
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is a proclamation for the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Commissioner James?
Thank you. As we know, as MLK Day approaches, we don't forget the contributions that he has made to our society, and we can just hope that we are honoring him and his legacy with forwarding his progress. So I'm going to read this proclamation, which is from the Office of the Mayor, City of Dania Beach, Florida. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15, 1929, and lived a life promoting peace, freedom, equality, and justice for all through nonviolent means, becoming one of the outstanding civil rights leaders of our time. And whereas at the age of 35, oh, that's my age, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was the youngest man to have received the Nobel Peace Prize. Whereas this marks the 35th annual observation by the citizens of Dania Beach to honor Dr. King's legacy with a day of remembrance intended as a time for all Americans to reaffirm their commitment to the basic principles that underline our Constitution: equality and justice for all. And whereas the ideals of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and of the Dania Beach's commitment to human rights are worthy of reflection and serve as a reminder that improving the quality of life for all members of society is a responsibility of every member of our society. And whereas we can bring life to the inspiring vision of freedom of which Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. dreamed, with our community's joint renewal of our love for life, God, and our country, now therefore, on behalf of the City of Dania Beach, your Mayor Lori Llewellyn of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 20th, 2020, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Dania Beach, and encourage all citizens to rededicate themselves to the principles of respect for human rights and freedom, of belief in nonviolence, and of commitment to improving our community through community service and volunteerism. I'm going to ask the President of the MLK Committee, former Mayor Bobby Grace, to come and receive this proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Bobby Grace, 110 Northwest 8th Avenue in the great city of Dania Beach. I am honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the members of the MLK Renaissance Corporation, and I would like for my members to please stand. For those that do not know the itinerary and the agenda for the weekend coming up, let me just give you a brief. On Saturday night, we will have an MLK gala at the IT Park and Community Center where we have a masquerade ball. It starts at 6:00 PM. We're going to have live entertainment, great food, good speakers. I received on yesterday a message from Congressman Debbie Wasserman Schoakes that she will be in attendance along with the former Mayor and County Commissioner Tim Rhine. Our keynote speaker will be the Vice Mayor of West Park, Brian Johnson, who is also running for state representative. So if you can attend, that will be great. The tickets are $40. Table is 320 for a table of eight. On Monday morning, we will have the prayer breakfast starting at 7:00 AM. It is open to everyone in the City of Dania Beach and Broward County because we have people from Hollywood and Fort Lauderdale that do come. It starts at 7:00, and we will make sure that you have a full course breakfast. At 8:45, we will be lining up for the parade. This year, I did something a little bit different, Mayor. We normally have the convertible cars, but the gentleman has left. Cobra Joe has been so graceful to give us some of the classic cars for my Commissioners and my City Manager and my City Attorney and the Mayor and the Vice Mayor to ride in. So that's going to be absolutely fantastic. You remember last year, we had Sling from Thomasville, Georgia, my hometown, that had those little sling cars. We did not put them in the budget this year because we could not afford it, but guess what? They're coming anyway. So that is just awesome. They said they enjoyed themselves so much. So the parade starts at 9:00. It will end at 10:30. We will be going to St. Joseph Methodist Church for the memorial service, and from 12 until 5:00, we will have progress in the park for the City of Dania Beach. Something for everybody. We have fantastic floats that's coming from Miami. I want to give a shout out for the Dania Library. They're going to be decorating one of our floats, and I hope that everybody, I hope the weather's going to be nice, first of all, and I hope that we all have a great time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bobby.
Can you guys come down and get this photo? We'd like to.
Sure.
Get it in our paperwork. And my committee, definitely. I'm nothing without them. Thank you.
This is my fourth meeting today.
Fourth today?
Fourth today.
Can you come over here? Come on down over here.
Can some of you either come from the other side?
I'm assured it is.
Come on over.
Is this the slimming camera?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Happy New Year.
Okay, citizen comments. Craig Valentine. I know you know the drill, but please state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. Craig Valentine, 1982, Tiger Tail Boulevard, Dania Beach, Florida, Gang Bros. Wrestling Asylum. Want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and let's kick off the New Year good. I know everybody attended our toy drive giveaway. Not everybody was able to attend the actual show itself because the parade was going at the same time, but for the people that were there and the people that were there the day after, 448 people attended our first live show. The wrestling fans themselves, the hand count, they brought in over 600 toys, not including what our Chi Sergio donated, along with Bobby Grace. So we want to thank everybody. There was a lot of happy kids. This is still new at doing this, so we're trying to go ahead and refine it and get it better. That was our first live pay-per-view event, which we didn't charge because it was Christmas. 1,928 people in the City of Dania Beach saw us on television. 20,000 people in Broward County saw us on television, and their phone devices, whatever they're using now to watch, and 396,000 saw us in the United States. We are hoping to double those numbers coming up on our March 14th event. So our Christmas for next year is going to be bigger and better.
And you're charging for the March event?
The March event, yes. We charge the ticket price, and we're at the Seafood Festival after. 2020 is going to be a very good year for the City of Dania Beach. A couple of people that did attend the show, and that was also filmed at our school as well, the Peanut Brothers Falcon movie, everybody saw it, it's at God's Saken. It was, I know former Mayor Grace was able to attend the show. So he was there. He was in the ring, along with the Hickson family, since the Montel Williams show did tape the military makeover at our facility in conjunction with WWE. It airs on Valentine's Day, 7:30 in the morning, so everybody will see themselves on there. We have 20 shows actually booked this year. 2020 equals 20. We had our first tryouts this Sunday. We had 15 people show up. We gave out three scholarships totaling $12,000. We're going to give out 20 scholarships this year. It was advertised on social media. It was advertised at most of the local stations. The only one thing that we didn't get any kids from was the City of Dania Beach. The only thing I would like to ask of the city is, can we please get more coverage for the events we do? The toy events, the cancer events, the scholarship events?
I'm sure we can arrange for somebody to be there. We have a social media company now, right? Okay, well, if it's part of the budget. Okay, we'll see if we can do something with the budget.
Thank you. And for the Martin Luther King Parade, me and Bobby Grace already pre-arranged this way back in October with Commissioner Brandimart. We have 250 shirts we're going to be giving away in the parade, so we don't want to back it up. So just like last year when we started the shirt giveaway, if we could be last in the parade, it would, it would help. And everything's just going to keep getting better and better for the year.
Thank you. Thanks, Craig.
Oh, go ahead.
So really, you didn't come here asking for money. You came here telling how many scholarships you gave away, and all your asking from us is a little advertisement?
Correct. We still fund everything ourselves.
Well, let me tell you something, Mr. Valentine. I wish you were here for the previous meeting because your site had more hips than hits than the City of Dania Beach.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Craig.
Excuse me, before you finish? Someone left their glasses up there. I don't want them to be broken, and if somebody can get them. They're on the podium. Someone's not going to be able to see.
Oh, those are gems.
No. Stephen Jones. Please state your name and address, and we've got a lot of them, so we'll limit everybody to three minutes tonight.
Stephen Jones, 4930 Southwest 29th Way. And I'm here to speak about the Honey and 15 Years Celebration. So I want to give a brief history on my family being here. My grandma came from Sally, North Carolina in 1940s. So my family been here for a long time, and I feel like it's a disappointment and disrespectful for the event to not have the first black families, or not even black, any other race, families to come there. No invitations, no nothing. And so I looked up, I asked Emmanuel George, "Hey, did you get an invitation?" He was like, "No." So I'm like, "Who's over the event?" Told me the name. I looked on Sunbiz. Come to find out, it's Lauren Oddman. Which, how can you have an event? Now, the City Attorney, isn't that a conflict of interest for somebody to have a nonprofit that sit on the board, that's the president, to have an event and get funds?
Can I first clarify?
Go ahead.
I didn't receive any funds. I don't receive any.
Oh, that's not just, that's not the point.
Well, no, you said that for, you asked if it was a conflict of interest about me receiving funds.
No, it's not about the funds. It's a conflict of interest of you being the president and...
We're not doing a question and answer today, so if you have comments, you can raise them, and when you're finished, you're finished.
Okay.
And also make an appointment with the City Attorney. I'm sure he'd be happy to clarify all your questions. Obviously, I would love to answer them, but I won't do so at the time expense of your request.
Okay, okay, I understand. But I feel like it's a disrespect. Nobody was invited, the Collins families, the Jones families. Where were all these people at? And then I have the whole Conferential Financial Support Report of all the capital form requests that everybody on here, well, most of the people, asked for raises because y'all say, "Oh, it's going to be, the city is growing. The city is growing by 0.94%. We need a raise. We need a salary increase. There's going to be 30,000 people coming to Dania Beach." What about the schools? Dania Beach look a mess. Elementary look a mess. Collins Elementary still look like it was when it first built. The money need to be going into the schools, not y'all pockets.
Thank you.
And we asking you to resign as being president of your nonprofit.
Thank you. Emmanuel George? Please state your name and address. You'll be limited to three minutes.
Greetings, everybody. Emmanuel George, 17 Northeast 2nd Avenue, Dania Beach, Florida, 33004. Now, everybody in the seats has seen me before, has seen my work before, has seen me on television before, has read about me in articles before, and I've came by here about maybe about nine times since about 2016. And when I was first coming here, the first thing I was speaking about was having the Dania Beach Historical Society. It's a document, it's a public record, that I was the first one to speak about this, as well as speaking about having a J.A. Ely Historical Museum. So this is all public record. I've said it before, when you go to the City of Pompano, they have the Pompano Beach Historical Society. When you go to Pompano, they also have the Blanche Ely Museum. When you go to Pompano, they have Baca. When you go across the tracks, they have the Ally Cultural Center. When you go to Fort Lauderdale, they have the Stradahan House. They also have the Old Diller Museum. When you go to Miami, they have Experienced Miami. They also have, sorry, they have dedication, that's the nation Miami, and they have Experienced Overtown. They also have the Hampton House in Liberty City. So, South Florida, South Broward does not have a historical society. I've been saying this since 2016. Before Lauren Oddman was even a Vice Mayor, and she came to me personally to help her with this. I agreed. I don't see my name on the Sunbiz, and I was the originator. Basically, my concept was stolen from me, and it's public records. It is fact that this was stolen from me. I've never crossed anyone here. I've always been a man of integrity, morals, and principles, and it's a shame for me to have my stuff stolen from me. And also, you know, the historical society, the event looked nice, the pictures were pretty cool, but I didn't see any of the Mizells there. I didn't see any of the Collins there, and it basically just looked like a political event, which it should not have been. So, you know, it's really emotional for me because I've dedicated my time and my effort going to different cities, collecting archive photos, videos, interviewing people, on preserving the local black history in Dania Beach. And to see my stuff be co-opted is a shame. So, you know, I'm very bothered by this, and this needs to be something addressed because this is not a political thing. I'm not running for office. I'm never running for office. I'm just someone who's doing something with a heart and with good integrity. So this has to be resolved because it is a conflict of interest to have a Vice Mayor be head of a historical society and to sell tickets, which is, okay, if you want to sell tickets, okay, but still, it is a conflict of interest, and this needs to be resolved. And, you know, y'all have my number. Y'all seen me around several times, social media everywhere. You know, y'all seen my work. It has taken me places. So I just want this to be resolved, and/or else this will not be the end. So, you know, so I just ask that I be the head of the Dania Beach Historical Society because it was originally my idea and my concept. It's a public record going back to 2016, 2017, speaking right here. So this needs to be addressed. You know what I'm saying? You co-opted my stuff. I considered you a friend.
Okay. Emmanuel, you're over your three minutes.
All right. And y'all going to answer me anyways.
Commissioner Brandimart?
Emmanuel. Emmanuel, talking to you. Okay. Look, don't make me come out there and slap you upside the head. I have a question to ask you. I heard everything you said. I've been up here all through everything you did coming up here. What I want to know was this: Were you even, as a black man that started all this with your...
The film project. That's all you do.
Thank you. Stop right there. Let me have my day, okay? Were you even asked to be on the committee for this?
No.
Okay.
I really, I really just had to find out myself because I didn't even know, and still right now, I don't even know as a Commissioner who's on this committee. I don't. I swear I don't.
One of them does not even live in the City of Dania Beach. And also, I also want to say that I was brought up about this event on a Thursday, and this event was on a Sunday, and the event, and it was already sold out. So it was like a slap in the face. Like, why invite me to talk about something when I'm not even there? And I can't really be there.
Maybe our Vice Mayor will revisit this herself in her own way.
Hold up a minute, okay? I just want to, just for the record, the whole, my understanding is the entire process of setting up the organization went through our City Attorney. So, and it was approved by our City Attorney. So if there is an issue, I suggest that you make an appointment with the City Attorney to sit down and talk to him about it.
He's not in charge of it.
Does it matter?
That's us. We're in charge of it.
No, 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 no. If there's a question about the legalities of it, then the need to make a...
Oh, no, I'm not talking about the legal. I agree with you on that.
That needs to be done through the City Attorney.
But they still should be involved.
Okay. Jackie Centafanti. Please state your name and address. You'll be limited to three minutes.
Hi, my name's Jackie Centafanti. I'm the Treasurer on the Board at Metta Brook Association, Phase V, Association A, and I have some serious concerns with how BSO is investigating several board members on our association board based on accusations by two, one, well, two board members, current board members, that are the reason for me being on the board this year. They were bullying previous board members and unit owners, and I decided to run for the board. I'm now the Treasurer, and they're not happy because they're not getting their way, but for some reason, John DeRosa has friends in BSO and told us at board meetings, basically warning us that he has friends in BSO. And based on what's happening, we've had to hire a criminal attorney. I've had to use our insurance... I've had to use our insurance that covers board members. I filed a claim with them, and BSO, some of their tactics are calling former board members on New Year's Day to come into the office for interviews. When the board member said, no, I'm here with my family, it's New Year's Day, he suggested coming to his home. The board member says, no, I've got my family and children here, this isn't happening. So, he recommends coming to our clubhouse. When I hear about this, because he's, he's from Peru and his English is not, you know, the best, so he called our vice president on our board and asked him to come, you know, to be his interpreter or, you know, to, to make sure he was clear on the questions or what was going on. That board member called me, so the three of us met with Detective Sissoni, C.I.C.C.O.N.E. And let me just tell you three, the three questions that he had to be there on New Year's Day. I had my grandchildren there with me and my daughter trying to celebrate, but I had to leave to attend this. One of the questions was, did you replace association mailbox? The answer was yes. The lock was bad and it was difficult to access, the cost around a hundred dollars. Our budget is around nine hundred thousand dollars, okay. Second question, New Year's Day. Did you purchase a laser printer for the association? And does your association bylaws allow for this type of purchase?
Ms. Centafanti, I understand, I hear you loud and clear. We have our chief of police here, I'm sure that either he can respond to or set up an appointment with him.
No, I went to the station and complained.
Three minutes. So, I'm, I would ask that you maybe set up an appointment, just sit down with BSO and have a conversation with them. I don't know that it's anything that we can do for you here.
There's nothing you can do, who's, who oversees BSO? My tax pay, I pay taxes. And, and I'm getting harassed by BSO.
Ma'am, we have our chief here tonight, I'm sure he can give you a card and you can contact him and speak with him.
I'm gonna contact the newspapers and file, you know, I'm gonna file in Internal Affairs, I've already got attorneys, I've got-
Ma'am?
Okay.
Thank you. Arturo Vives?
Good evening. Good evening.
Please state your name and address, and we're limiting you to three minutes.
Arturo Vives, uh, five four two zero southwest forty fourth avenue. And I actually wanted to speak specifically about, uh, an item that's coming up later. It wasn't really so much for citizen comments.
Okay, so you wanted to wait until the item comes up?
Yeah, yeah, that's alright, I appreciate it.
Uh, there's several other people here with the same item, you want to hold off until then? Or is there anybody that wants to speak now? Come on up, what was your name? Marge Perry, come on up. Please state your name and address, you'll be limited to three minutes.
Thank you, Marge Perry, fifty five twenty one southwest forty fourth terrace in Dana Beach. Couple of things, um, I just want to thank you to Mark LaFerrier. He's been very helpful in several issues that we're having in our neighborhood and, um, he's the best employee you have, so you know. First, item number-
Nine point two?
Yes, nine oh two. Uh, it says it's a second reading. But I was here for the first reading and I didn't even know it was happening because it was a typo or- the first reading was not correct, so I don't see how it gets to be a second reading. It said ten D U A C when it's really twenty five D U A C. That was the case at the same time on information at the planning meeting. So, I don't, doesn't seem right that it should be a second reading when it was incorrect the first time around. Uh, secondly, our neighborhood met, uh, recently, uh, an informal meeting. There's a hundred homes in our neighborhood that are greatly affected by several things going on on Fifty Fourth Court, Fortyth Avenue, the Hard Rock and the soon-to-be apartment complex, um, that this item brings about. Um, we're a hundred, hundred homes. Um, I have a petition from nineteen of those homeowners that met with us, but I'd like to keep it until we can get the rest of them. Um, the plan, one of the plans of the apartment complex shows closing off Fifty Fourth Court at Fortyth Avenue. In effect, you would be exiling us from the city of Dana Beach. We would be exiting only, entering and exiting our neighborhood only on Fortyth Avenue in Hollywood. I mean, on fifty, uh, four forty one in Hollywood. So, basically, we wouldn't even be part of Dana Beach anymore. We were annexed into Dana many, many years ago. Uh, we chose Dana over Hollywood at that time in the vote because we thought we'd have a, a bigger voice in, uh, we, because we were a larger section of a smaller city instead of being a small group. Um, now, we're re, we're rethinking that now. Fifty Fourth Court has always been a cut through to Fortyth Avenue. Um, it's, wasn't caused by the Hard Rock. There are issues now being caused by the Hard Rock, but they certainly weren't caused by our neigh, our neighborhood. Fortyth Avenue has been getting worse and worse. I was here at a meeting in June about an issue that's going on. And you said yourself, Lauren, that you were appalled at Fortyth Avenue. And that was four months before the guitar opened. So, this is not just, the issues are not just caused by the guitar. Um, I suggested something to Mark, he's working on it, I've been trying to reach out to different areas. I don't know who can tackle this, whether it's the Seminole Police, the Seminole Tribe, the Hard Rock, Department of Transportation, City of Hollywood. But there's no reason why, when people are exiting the Lucky Street Garage, that it can't be closed off so they can only go right or left on four forty one. There's no reason they need to go through a residential neighborhood on Fifty Fourth Court. That can be accomplished in some way by somebody. Um, so that's a thought, that's an, that someone can work on. And, um, we'll be back on the twenty eighth.
Thank you. Thank you. You have to fill out a paper. And are you gonna speak on that same issue? It'll be coming up, you can speak when it's public comment, okay? Okay, public safety reports?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, I was hoping that lady would have stuck around. She is actually the subject of a long-term criminal investigation. She's been instructed numerous times to stop obstructing our investigation because we don't want to arrest her. But she's pretty much leaving us no choice, every day she's getting in the middle of the investigation somehow. There's lots of subpoenas we have to get. But that's a little background on that, she's trying to use every avenue she can to, uh, make us look bad. That's why she obviously didn't want to sit down and talk to me. Uh, because we've instructed her numerous times, please stay out of our investigation. We'll let you know when we can give you information on it. But she is the subject. Onto my report. Uh, the census is coming up, we're gonna have lots of people out and about, counting, going door to door. Please make sure that you check their ID with the census logo on it. Please look at their laptop bag, it has a census logo on it, as well as their laptop itself. So, uh, keep, keep that in mind when people are knocking on your door. It is very important that, that they do get accurate numbers. Beginning January first, we started issuing traffic citations for texting while driving, just a reminder. We're hoping this'll cut down on the more serious crashes and crashes in general. Uh, we're seeing cases of fraud, this is fraud season with, uh, tax season upon us. So, please, the IRS will not call you, don't fall for any scams like that. Uh, we had an uptick in burglaries on the beach the last two weeks. So, we set up surveillance and we ended up catching the guy before he did another burglary. And he also had warrants for burglaries out of Hollywood and Dana. Um, we've been utilizing the Ring application a lot. I want to urge the, the citizens, if they, they get Ring footage, send it to us, please. Uh, we just started visiting hotels and meeting with management to discuss the upcoming Super Bowl. We've been letting them know what to look for in regards to illegal activity and human trafficking. Uh, that completes my report.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, I'll start at the end. What, what measures are you taking with the, um, vacation rentals on the same issue of human trafficking and illegal activity?
When, when we receive a, a call, whether it's a loud party or too many vehicles in a driveway, block in the sidewalk, uh, we write reports on them and forward them to code enforcement.
Okay. And, um, how you started it, um, the young lady, is she, um, a dangerous suspect? Like, what do you, uh, advise us to do? Because I've spoken to her several times, like, should I have a shank or just don't answer her calls? Like, what level of a suspect is she, I need to know.
It's more of a white collar in nature.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Sergio Pelissero District Chief. Uh, so basically, what I'm gonna tell you tonight is, uh, how busy we were last year. Our units ran six thousand five hundred eighty eight calls, so that's an average of eighteen calls a day. That's a pretty busy, busy, uh, fire station. Of those, uh, six thousand five hundred calls, forty six hundred of them were EMS based, so they were, you know, the rescue truck was super busy. And then the other nineteen hundred and twenty calls were, uh, basically fire, fire-related or severe weather. But, you know, having said that, there is one thing that I, sometimes I don't communicate very well, so I, I, I'll send out a text and I'll start talking, you know, because I've been in the fire service for twenty nine years, so I'm used to talking with all these fancy terms, MCI, trauma alert, this and that. And, you know, by the time I finish the text, the person on the other end probably's got question marks going through their head. So, um, I can make you a promise, MCI, multi-casual incident, which means when, you know, five or more people get hurt, um, that's something I have to be able to clarify. So, if I ever send you a text with some funny letters or for some funny words, please just quite, put question marks and I reply to you so I can, uh, be very clear and precise so you understand what I'm saying. Um, I think that's important, uh, that when I communicate to you, that you understand what I'm telling you so that you know what's going on. My, my main function is to communicate to you what's going on in the city when we have these events. And if you don't understand me, that's an issue. So, I want to make sure you guys are, are clear, and if you ever have any questions with me, you, please, please, um, you know, don't hesitate to call me or ask me or just put question marks and then I know you, you know, you, you know what I'm, you need to, I need to tell you. So, with that, do you have any questions with me?
I have a question, let me ask. Um, those calls that you were talking about for last year, did you have that broken down by, by station?
I, I can't get, I have them broken down right now by like percentages. I don't, I can, I have, do have the numbers. I can send you a full report, I have a full report that I can send to the whole commission that breaks it down by station, by ins, by different, um, incidents like, uh, fire, um, severe weather, different incidents. And, um, now that you asked me that, we did have, uh, the boating accident that we had over in the jetty. Uh, that was, uh, multi-agencies and I, I could tell you that the crews between BSO, Hollywood and our, um, BSO police, uh, they, these guys worked, um, really good and really hard getting four patients that were critical off that boat and fairly quickly.
Do, do you think that by the next meeting at the end of the month, that you could bring us maybe a breakdown of by station and concurrent calls versus individual calls?
Yes, I can email to you tomorrow, I already have it.
Okay, that's fine, just to present, I'm saying, okay, thank you. Commissioner James?
Yes, um, were you able to get extra, um, smoke detectors for our aging communities that may need them? I think you used to give them out at like the homeowners association meetings and-
Yeah, usually we do that during, um, October because that's usually the fire, fire, fire month. But what I did is I did go to Courtney Palmer and I'm setting up all the events for, um, for the next senior meetings that I'll, I'll bring, whatever we have, I'll bring.
Okay, also, what measures, with the Super Bowl coming, um, what measures have you all taken? Because I am sure that the calls are going to exceed any number that you have had. Um, so, is there some type of an agreement, uh, with all of the cities to try and get more, are more firefighters going to work during those times? Or how are you going to adjust and adapt with the amount of service calls that you're prepared to have?
Well, as far as the amount of service calls that we will have in, in Dana and the, the immediate area, we're hoping there, there won't be too many, but we have not officially, you know, sat down and did the, you know, like, how many more units we're gonna be, uh, putting in service. We're having a meeting with all the fire chiefs tomorrow at nine AM, and that's a mandatory meeting that every single fire chief has to be there and we're gonna discuss all this, so I can give you the answers after that meeting.
Okay, and Leslie, thank you, um, those of you that may not know, uh, we had a few families that were unfortunate this holiday season and I reached out to Chief and he ensured and made sure, regardless if the kids were seventeen or if they were two months old, that they had at least something for the holiday season. And so, you made a lot of kids really happy, you know, those, those families were greatly appreciative of your efforts, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Brandon Marty?
I'm not leaving.
Chiefs, listen, are you charging for these ambulance calls?
Am I charging?
Yeah, I mean, are they getting charged, right?
Yes, they are.
Because just this month alone, you had nine calls to the same apartment. And I'm wondering, how are they paying this bill? I'm, I'm serious though, because those bills still leave you over a thousand dollars. But no, really, at one oh one Southeast Third Avenue, look up on your thing there. The other night, I'm leaving and I heard the one guy say to the other, but we were just here Monday, and he was right. He was there Monday and he was there Wednesday and he was there Friday. That's why I'm asking, are you charging this person or not? And are they paying the bill?
They pay the bill with their insurance, the insurance gets charged.
And do you just accept that or do you want the, the balance from them?
No, we accept that.
You accept the insurance?
Whatever the insurance provides, that's what we usually accept, though, like, we're not into, we're not in the process of bill collecting.
But you're not a taxi service either, right? All right, just wanted to check it out because that's awful strange, nine calls to one same apartment. Ask your boys, they'll tell you.
We have frequent, you know, people that are sick and they're frequently get sick, so, you know, unfortunately, they're, you know, they don't have, they don't have-
They're home the next day.
They don't have family, they don't have people to, to take care of them here locally. Most of those people are elderly and they're, they don't have anybody to take care of them. So, I can tell you that, you know, when that has happened in the past, I would go back and make personal calls on those people. I know one day, it was, uh, the day before Mother's Day and we ran on this lady two or three days in a row. And I knew Mother's Day was coming up and I asked her, where are your kids? And they're all out of town, so the next day, I brought her flowers. So, that's the kind of stuff that, you know, we try to do and just make calls and make sure their, their houses are clean. We had a person that also called frequently, we went to his house and cleaned it up for him. So, that's a, you know, I don't have to sit here and, and tell you that, and I don't want to tell you this, but it's important that you realize, a lot of our firemen go, you know, do, do that. So.
But thank you, I think you'll enjoy visiting this one, she's only thirty-two years old. She ain't an old lady that needs help. Talk to your boys, you might see that, you, you have a problem there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine times.
Okay, next is consent agenda, I know we are pulling seven point five. Any other polls?
Seven point four.
Any others?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of seven point four.
And seven point five?
And, well, okay, and seven point five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes. Seven point four, resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero two. It's resolution of the city commissioner, the city of Dana Beach, Florida, authorizing the reappropriation, two hundred thousand dollars for unused funds from the Oasis. Fourteen project fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, provide needed funding for transit operations study for the multimodal transportation project and beachfront parking lot lighting, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date.
Yes, thank you. I'll have a few questions about this item. Um, are we no longer doing the Oasis? Because I, I don't, I know that, I read the backup and why this, the funding for this one was pulled, but I don't see why we couldn't use this for other streets of the Oasis because a lot, there are a lot of places where Oasis has not been. Um, and there are a lot of our residents that really believe in this program. And then my other questions are, I only saw, we, it's sort of like we're going to be approving a blank check because there's only one number there and it's forty-one thousand dollars. Um, so that leaves like a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars that we don't have numbers for. And, uh, I, I would like to explore all of the options with my colleagues and maybe discuss this at a future meeting to see what we all wanted to do, because I, I know Mark is doing a mobility study, correct? So, I don't know the cost of that and how much- So, I don't know the cost of that, and how much of this could be achieved in that. And it said that the neighborhood didn't want the Oasis program. Did they email that to y'all, or did they just, or it says the community, it says it wasn't supported by the community?
Hold on, Fernando, City Manager?
Yes, before I turn it over to Fernando, and I know that Colin's here for some historical information. So, our city ended up losing thousands of dollars last year because we were really having an empty shuttle bus going throughout our entire city. One of the key things when it comes to transit and transportation is making sure that we have a transit study. And this includes surveys and really engaging our community, so we don't continue to lose that money. What we would like to do is be able to move some of that money to do a transit survey, so we can better have better routes based on the needs of our residents, and be able to have safer routes, and to be able to have those, that movement with either trolley or vans, but full of people, rather than empty vans that are going not where our people wanted to go. So, we felt that it's very important that we set some money aside to be able to move forward. Lighting is also a very, very important issue in our city, and this is discussions that I've had with BSO and with our chief. When you don't have enough lighting in certain areas, you're putting also our people in an unsafe predicament. So, these studies are geared to be able to be very interactive, A, so we don't lose money in appropriations for the county, and B, to make sure that all our routes are filled with folks. So, with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Fernando.
Well, I want to just say that the question isn't the integrity of what you guys are asking for. The question is, if we appropriated $200,000, or if we set that aside for an Oasis project, why aren't we using those for an Oasis project? Absolutely, the studies need to be done, or we should have budgeted for that, and we still can budget for that. But I, there's no time that I've heard this commission say that we don't want to do the Oasis project. So, I'm just not in favor of taking the funding of, you know, the enhancement of our different neighborhoods. And, you know, when our previous manager was here, and Colin, I guess, could tell you of how they chose the different areas in the neighborhoods, I don't know, we, you know, the commission is not part of that process, only the approval. You bring us different areas, and I know the community loves that program. I mean, some of the communities don't do pavers, they just, like, Metalucca only did, like, signs, and maybe their mailboxes or something like that. But as far as, you know, shifting this money over to something that, you know, wasn't a priority or wasn't discussed by the commission, I'm not in favor of it. And, you know, the lighting and all of that as well, but I want to see a number before I commit to just saying, "You can have all of the money," because you're saying some of the money, but this was requested for $200,000.
What I want to say is that we totally support the Oasis projects, totally, without a doubt. We're not coming here to end the Oasis projects. We're asking us, you know, to shift some of that money to be able to address some of these things that we have identified as a priority, because by not doing things right, we've been losing money in appropriations from the county. So, with that said, I'm just gonna turn it over to Fernando, so maybe he can bring a little bit more clarity, and we also have Colin here as well.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Commissioners and City Staff. Fernando Rodriguez, Director of Public Services. That is actually a very good question, and I understand the concern. I'm gonna address the question, it's a three or four-part, I think, concern. There was no money budgeted, as you alluded to, for the lights at the beachfront, nor for some unforeseen complications, additional costs, in the multimodal project that the CRA put together with a grant, a TAP grant, which is already under construction. We are going to ascertain shortly the shortage of that, for that project, which may be under $100,000. We're not sure, we're trying to narrow it down. It's an engineering review that took place, which found some issues with the crosswalks and the signage, so it will actually enhance the neighborhood when you go into possibly lit crosswalks with the bright lights in some of the places in the crosswalks. So, we're trying to ascertain that cost. The street light, the parking lot lights, I'm sorry, have been priced, but we're trying to get an upgraded set of lighting, that it could go from turtle light mode to regular mode. So, that's the best and state-of-the-art that we should be doing at the parking lot. Near the quarter deck is very dark, and that could come in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $80,000. We're trying to narrow that down. So, you're correct, we don't have firm numbers. We will shortly, and the $200,000 that was allocated two fiscal years ago may not necessarily cover all of it, but at least it's money that will help our budget, because we don't have the money budgeted. Oasis, second part of the concern, Oasis has not stopped by any means. The flow of projects has continued. This is fiscal 1718, this Oasis 14 project, number 14. Other two projects have come after that, and my understanding is that yearly, we allocate $200,000 to Oasis. That is not going to stop, to my understanding. We're simply taking money that was sitting in a pot from two years ago and finding a good use for it. It doesn't imply or mean that Oasis is, has slowed down. In fact, there's been two other projects that have gone forward with lighting and signage across walks since that Oasis 14. So, 15 and 16 have gone forward. No one is, no one is saying, as the manager alluded to, that Oasis is, proposing that it slows down or stops. It's just money sitting in the pot for that project, and there was no support for it. I know that Colin was here at the time, there was a community meeting for the project, and hardly anyone showed up. There were possibly reasons for that, because there was a development that was supposed to happen near that neighborhood, and it fizzled out and didn't happen, and that might have been a factor. I wasn't here for that. But the community meeting that they had for that Oasis 14 didn't really go anywhere. There was no support for it. And perhaps if I need Colin to explain it better, he can, but.
I just, I want to have clear numbers before I vote on something, because, you know what? One of the items may cost $120,000, and then you don't have enough money to do the other project. But I don't want to just say, "Here's a blank check, and, you know, we're gonna see what the numbers are, and what if it doesn't cost that amount of money?" You know, we're, we should be able to, we're the ones that should be able to say, "This is what we want to do. These are the projects that we want to do." And a lot of our projects have been on hold, and our priorities have been on hold, because of a strategic plan. So, we don't have that yet. That's the, that's the language that goes around a lot about having this strategic plans and identifying the priorities. But here, you guys are saying priorities and how they get funded. When we bring projects up as our priorities and how to get funded, we are on the back burner. So, I just want to be able to look at numbers and make sure I am comfortable with the decision that I am making. So, it's not like I wouldn't support having lighting at the beach, because I know when our former director was here, that was one of our things, restriping the beach, putting proper lighting at the beach with the sea turtles and all this other stuff. So, I definitely would want the numbers before, you know, I could support it. And also, I would want to include, maybe we can include other areas that could benefit from it. I know 14th doesn't have sidewalks there, Northwest 14th Street, in between Dania Beach Boulevard and 1st Street. They don't have sidewalks there. We're gonna be building new homes and stuff in these areas, and those areas, you know, aren't up to what we would want to say is the City of Dania Beach, and something new and exciting for us to have. So, I'm just requesting that we table this until the next meeting, or until you all could have some numbers for us to actually vote on.
Commissioner, and if I may chime in, we got a call from the quarter deck, and the quarter deck is managed by a Dania Beach resident, a local resident that lives here. When we went out there and we were walking from the quarter deck to our cars, we couldn't even see our hands.
I know, I'm out there often.
I know, to, so, sometimes, we may not have planned for something, but something comes to the surface that is very grave in regards to public safety. And it's our responsibility to bring that information to you, to be able to address that lighting, because that is an establishment that is open seven days a week. So, we have a responsibility to bring it to you, because God forbid somebody falls, or there's some sort of crime that happens, and then we have to balance the lighting between safety and the turtles. So, we're just bringing that up, because it's come to our attention, and we think that it's extremely important. We can give you the details of exactly how much it's gonna cost, and our goal is to do a citywide lighting assessment, because there are areas here in our city that I have driven through at night, and I've driven with the director, and I've driven with our assistant manager, that are very, very dark. And, like I said, lighting and good lighting is a deterrent for crime. So, if you, if you wish, and you support this item, we will give you exactly how much is the cost to be able to address that. Any other remaining dollars will go back to that pot for Oasis, and you could decide where you want to redirect that appropriation.
Well, my motion would be the opposite, for us to know the numbers before I vote on it, and that's just me.
Commissioner Branumartie?
I want to tell you something, you said one good thing, Colin's here. Colin, you were here with Bob Baldwin, the former City Manager, and you were all gung ho for the Oasis project, because we knew most of the Oasis project is in the CRA area. Here we go again. The CRA area was to improve the lives of our residents that are already living there. That's why you have those roundabouts, that's why all the streets were changed, and you can't say that you were against it. All this money has not finished. This Commissioner sitting next to me, and I both, together, asked even for it to be made into a larger area, put some also, not only in the CRA area, but off of Dania Beach Boulevard. Am I right, Bill? And that's where it is. So, if you've got money left over, I want our Oasis project that we agreed and voted on, and you were here at that time. I didn't get any on the east side, and on the west side, they're not finished yet. You didn't improve every area in the CRA area. That's why this keeps going back and forth to me, CRA, 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 CRA. That's extra money, put the lights in the beach and put the rest of that money where it belongs. That's the way I feel, because I'm not gonna vote, to do a study is more important than spending the money on the residents? I don't think so.
Okay. My comments, just real quick. First of all, the Oasis project is not just in the CRA district. There are a number of them all over the city that have been done. There are some down the road from me, there are some over in the southwest. There are some in the southeast, I believe, they're in several different places. So, this is not a CRA issue, this is a citywide issue. Is it, is it, my understanding from what you're asking for here is that you need to, it's a public safety issue. I understand that, because I've made the comment every time I go down there at night, that, I mean, somebody could get hurt. Somebody could get killed. I mean, if somebody wanted to mug somebody, it would be a very easy place to do it, because it's very, very dark down there. And I know there's been some big bright light that they put up recently that is horrible, and I don't know why that's even there. But personally, I mean, public safety affects everybody. So, I personally feel like that's an important thing that we need to deal with. What I'm trying to find out from you, we don't have an exact number at this point. Are you saying that you need to have this agreed to, so that you can move forward now? Or is this something that can wait until the next meeting?
There are two things that are happening, and I want to make it very, very clear. Number one, our beach is extremely dark and extremely dangerous. It's been brought to our attention, and we have seen it. Number two, we have had a designated amount of monies from the county. That money has been stripped from us because of lack of ridership in one of our routes. So, whenever I have dealt with something like this, I look to see if the city has an adopted transit study. We don't have an adopted transit study. So, that is why I'm making a recommendation. I don't want to lose money to the county. I want to be able to engage in a study, so our residents can tell us where do they want to go? Do we want to move the kids from parks to school? Do we want to move our residents from this area, Central City Hall, to Dania Point, to the beach? So, my recommendation is that we set aside money for transit study, because I don't want to lose more monies to the county. Now, we could set up an appropriation and not touch this, the monies where they were originally appropriated, and we can bring back an Oasis project, or we can have another meeting to see if there's more interest. So, we can cast a wide net, and it's a win-win for everybody. So, if I can ask to set aside maybe $50,000 from reserves to do this transit study, and set aside, what do you recommend, Director, in regards to addressing the lighting at the beach, and then moving on with the commission meeting with the neighborhood to also have the Oasis project? And it's a win-win for everybody.
Is that, can you give us a number on the lighting?
I should be getting a number this week.
Okay, so we can't get, we can't get it today.
So, what, let me ask you this, since we don't have a number, is this something that can wait until the next meeting? We will bring it to the next meeting, but based on this discussion that we're having, we'll leave the monies appropriation for an Oasis project that everybody is supportive of, and then we'll bring you a number for the transit study and what the cost is gonna be for the lighting in the beach.
So, we can continue this until the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner James?
I guess my question was answered, or not really, but it's gonna wait, so it doesn't matter. So, with that, I make the motion to continue 7.4 until the next meeting.
Which is on January 28th? Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please. Tom, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Branumartie?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odmann?
Yes.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up is bids and requests for proposals.
Yes, Item 8.1, Resolution 2020-007. It's Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, authorizing the award of a bid related to invitation to bid number 19009 for Community Bus Transportation Services to Limousines of South Florida, Inc., in an amount of $45,000, $45 per hour, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date.
Is there anybody presenting on this, or?
Yeah, we have our Parks and Recreation Director to present. This is just to continue their contract until we move forward with our transit study and go in the best direction for our city.
Good morning, Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
Morning.
I hear ya.
I'm in another lane. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. Yes, this is just to move forward with our new contract for our bus services.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Branumartie?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odmann?
Yes.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Public hearings.
Yes, public hearings, Item 9.1, Ordinance Number 2020-001. It's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 18 entitled pensions and retirement. Article 4 entitled policemen and firemen, Section 18-42, entitled benefit amounts and eligibility of the City Code of Ordinances related to the police and firefighters' retirement system, amending the ordinance in order to be compliant with Chapter 2019-21, Laws of Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This is second and final reading.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against?
Move the item?
Second.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Branumartie?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odmann?
Yes.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 2, 9.2, Ordinance Number 2020-002. It's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, approving the request made by Lee Robinson-Care on behalf of Bealt 4200 Real Estate LLC to amend Chapter 28 Land Development Code of the City Code of Ordinances by amending Part II Site Development Regulations, Article 205, Tabular Summary of Site Development Standards for All Zoning Districts, Section 205-10B, PRD 1, in multiple-family districts, to amend the maximum allowed density in the multifamily, 25 units per dwelling acre residential district, RM 2, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. This is second and final reading.
Good evening, Corinne LeJoy, Planning and Zoning Manager. This is second reading for this text amendment. So, first reading was presented at the last meeting, and I made a full presentation at that time, and I'm able to do so again if you. that time and I'm able to do so again if you need a refresher on your presentation. But there's been no revisions that have been made since the first reading. And originally on first reading, there was no public comment. This is the item that one of the residents had already identified that there was a Scrivener's error in the notice, but we've worked with the city attorney's office and they've determined that it was a Scrivener's error and it was corrected on the agenda and could go forward. But I'm available if you have any questions as is the applicant.
Are we voting on this tonight or we not? Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. I know we have several people that have put in comments, so I will call you each up. Arturo Vives.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me better now? Okay. Yeah, I do have a bit of a soft voice, I apologize. I'm Arturo Vives, 5420 Southwest 44th Avenue in what I guess I am now terming extreme western Dana Beach. Yeah, I'm speaking about this because basically the fundamental thing, first of all, I should thank you guys for giving me this opportunity for even to be in this forum because it's helping me on one of my New Year's resolutions, which is to put myself in as many uncomfortable situations as possible. This is way out of my comfort zone. I'm not, I don't do this. This is not what I'm supposed to do. So with that being said, the proposal, or my understanding is there's more than one proposal for this particular project, one of which indicates to close down 40th Avenue at Southwest 54th Court. I've lived in that area, in that house, in my house for 20 years and I know many families who have lived there. And closing that area down, basically while it might be nice to open up these luxury apartments and I'm sure they'll be lovely, closing down, as Marge, my neighbor, mentioned, would really be shutting out these families effectively from the city. And to have to, I mean, okay, so you have maybe an issue with pizza deliveries would take longer and stuff like that. I mean, you know, that we can work around things like that. But when I think of, for like my son, for example, my son has autism and I've been fortunate that he's been able to go to these, you know, to the school, the autism cluster, you know, they've treated him very well over these years. The school bus comes right to our block on Southwest 54th Court and 44th Avenue. That is part of his IEP. It has to stop there. We have several other special needs students who go to that bus stop. That would effectively, most likely have to be changed or they would probably have to go to another area that was closed down. It would certainly cause a great delay in school travel. And again, these are special needs children. To ask them to do that is really, you know, I really can't fathom that, quite frankly. It's interesting to hear the fire chief talking about the rescue calls. I think I wrote down that he had over 6,000. I can tell you that there were at least six over at my block, you know, in the past year or so. There's an elderly gentleman who, you know, he has a heart condition, you know, and he has had a lot of rescue calls there. I mean, he's still hanging in there though because I'm sure he's, he won't, you know, he won't die unless his wife gives him permission, but, you know, so he is hanging in there. But it just, to think that there would be an issue with that, I mean, I just feel like this hasn't been thought, I'm sorry, thought through totally, you know, as far as how it would affect all these families in this area. So I do hope that that will be taken into account when we're looking at that proposal as far as closing that off. Obviously, traffic is an issue in that area, but that's something we can discuss, you know, as far as speed tables and things like that. But certainly to add all these apartments and then to close that down on top of that would really be, I think, not a good idea, to put it nicely. And to yield the rest of my time to my neighbors and to common sense.
You're actually over, but thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Michael Pazani?
Good evening.
And thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you. There were a lot more people that were coming to the meetings that were supposed to be here tonight, but apparently they were terrified and just talked themselves into staying home. I did not talk myself into staying home. That's the bad news. The good news is I'll be two minutes. Keep this extremely simple and short. I have one request and that's basically that you all try to put yourselves in our shoes, okay? Let me paint a picture for you. You know, you may live in a fancier neighborhood, you may rarely if ever set foot in our neighborhood, but we set foot in there all the time. And a lot of people have been setting foot in that neighborhood for a long time. On 44th Terrace alone, there are multiple people that have been there over 30 years and a couple that have been over there, been there over 40 years. Marge has been there 44 years. So that being said, in this neighborhood, everything is one story or two stories, everything that you can see besides the guitar off in the distance. You know, the next part should be easy for you, especially if your neighborhood contains only one and two-story dwellings. You know, now imagine yourself with 60 or 70-foot tall buildings over on your right and then you look to the left and there's another proposed building that's going to be 80 feet tall on the left, the Kosher House. And then now we're talking about potentially changing, you know, cutting off traffic from there so that we can't even, we can't even go to the city we're a part of. We've got to drive out to Hollywood and go out and around. It's absurd. It really is. It's as absurd as putting an 80-foot tall building 22 feet from Marge's backyard, you know, which is the Kosher House. I know we're talking about serenity, but it's the same thing. Everything's one story, two stories tall. Now we've got 70 feet tall. So all that shoehorned into your neighborhood in a matter of a few months, just all of a sudden it's going to appear and they're going to cut off the traffic. So anyway, put yourself in our shoes before you make a final decision. This seems like it's been kind of snuck through and if Marge hadn't recognized it disguised in the minutes, we wouldn't even be here tonight. So if we were in your shoes, we wouldn't let you, we wouldn't let them do it to you. So please, please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Vestardis? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Judy Vestardis, 5510 Southwest 44th Terrace, Dana. Since 1988, we're a community that tries to pull together and help each other. Our neighborhood resembles the UN. Hardworking families, single parents, retirees, widows and widowers, people from many cultures. We all get along. Hard Rock was the beginning of our demise. Kids used to play at the end of the cul-de-sacs. Signs were posted with children at play. Our streets have too many cars driving and parking on them now. A multi-dwelling Serenity House will increase that. We are mostly single-family dwellings, a few duplexes, some triplexes, not the multi-dwelling being proposed. We joined the residents along 40th Avenue to become Dana Beach instead of Hollywood. We chose you because at the time you listened to us. We felt that you were on our side. Now you want to cut us off from Dana by blocking 54th, choosing us over a developer that seems to have forged a relationship with this city. Will their proposed Serenity House have access to 40th Avenue? Our only access will be through the city of Hollywood and the mess of Lucky Street and 441. If you lived there, you would know. At the end of a long day's work, that's nothing to look forward to. By blocking 54th and 40th, people coming down from the Hard Rock McDonald's, the Rock Plaza with its massage parlor and skybar will drive down 54th, realize they can't get through, turn around frustrated and scream back to 441. Many of these people will be inebriated due to the 24/7 party going on across the street. You can post dead-end signs all you want. With a ridiculous amount of signage already there, people won't see them. Is the City of Dana going to work with Waze, Google Maps, and other search engines to ensure that their routes, that they take us out of their routes? Access to Sterling Elementary and Hollywood High School will be cut off, forcing children and their parents to go out to 441 and then down to Sterling. Will there be a bus, school bus service, will there? We have a few special needs children, as my neighbor has stated. What about our emergency services? They will only have one way in. No matter what system you put in, it will take longer. With Serenity House to the east, Kosher House nearly three blocks west of that, we're, what is left of our small, what is left of our small peaceful enclave? Again, we are hardworking people. I've been there 32 years. We cannot just move if we don't like it. We cannot find affordable housing in the area. Many of us plan to die right there. We already too, we already had a huge hit with Hard Rock. Our property values will go down. We'll be shattered by the Kosher House. Where will we go then? The City of Dana Beach Commission is allowing us to be swallowed up with no regards to our residents. Please, think this over carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Ann Grover?
Hi.
Please state your name and address.
Lori Ann Grover, 5451 Southwest 44th Avenue, Dana Beach. I am opposed to both having 40th closed and also building of the apartment complex for multiple reasons. Well, this is a side note. Originally, it was a 10 DUA and now it's listed as a 25 DUAs. So which one is it really? So that's a side note. And then having apartments and not homeowners in our community, we are creating a more transient community of 275 units into a community of about 100 homeowners. Basically, I also say it's going to be a transient thing because in between the Hard Rock and multiple other things, multiple other businesses in Hollywood that are right on our corner, we are now getting a lot of walking traffic, people walking around. And for one instance, we need more BSO traffic at night especially. My house was, my car was broken into, then my neighbor's car was broken into. And then in the middle of this, two-week span or three-week span, we lost power. I went over to go check on the FPNL and in the midst of this, on the side that has a sidewalk, I was just walking one street directly behind me. A car followed me and then when I refused to come into his car, he's like, would you like to be kidnapped? Luckily, one of my neighbors was outside because of the power outage. I jumped into her yard and he drove away. So we definitely need more BSO traffic at night for these reasons. And if you add in more transient homes for this apartments, then it's only going to get worse because they're not homeowners. They don't have to stay there. Anything can happen. And anyway, I just feel like it's just going to be more of a problem than it is. Plus, there's a lot of problem traffic on 40th Street, right, 40th Street? And, oh, 40th Avenue. I'm sorry. 40th Avenue and if they've added approved townhouses on one corner of 40th, directly behind that, they're now opposing for Serenity House, the 275 apartments. So I don't know how we can possibly get all of that traffic, over 500 cars, through 40th Avenue and 441. So that's why I'm also opposed to the apartments being placed. And also, if you close off 40th Avenue, then you're going to maroon us like it's been said. You know, we're part of this community and we don't want to have to drive into other cities just to get home. Also, we are very much like Malaluka Gardens, which only has two entrances. We have an east entrance and a west entrance, 441 or 40th Avenue. That's the only way into our property. You know, there's three dead-end streets and 40th and 54th Court. That's it. That's all 100 residents. We also say if you would really like to close this off, maybe you should do a case study, put a accounting device at the end of the street with a camera so basically someone can abuse that. But we are not the problem 240th Avenue's traffic issue like some have addressed in, I guess, a previous meeting. Also, if we are definitely 100% on the losing side of the apartment complex not being built, I would like for you guys to downsize it completely because as others have stated, this is a six-story building that they want to build in our very tiny two-story community area. And having that so large, I mean, that's just going to be a very large building monstrosity to us. If you cut it in half and maybe only three stories, then it's not going to be such an eyesore to us.
I'm going to need you to wrap up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I think I'm about done, but thank you very much.
Okay, before you go, did you report that incident to the BSO?
I did not.
I would, I would ask that before you leave tonight, that you do that. At least let them know so maybe they can make arrangements, just have you sit down and put out a report because otherwise we can't catch somebody who's doing something like that.
Yes.
Unless they know about it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody else here to speak for or against? Just come, you have to get in line and come up. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss you? I did. I'm sorry. Hold on. Nancy Self. Please state your name and address and be limited to three minutes.
Nancy Self, 5531 Southwest 44th Terrace in Dana. I've been sitting in the audience and after that, when the neighbor was speaking, people behind me were saying, oh my gosh, wow, this is horrible. Because they can feel what we're feeling in our neighborhood. We also have the, we have the casino traffic, we have the guitar traffic, we have two restaurants now at Rock Center. We have the proposal of the Kosher House Hotel and we also have the McDonald's. And because of this traffic, we are now getting cars parking on 54th Court. BSO has been helping out with that. They have put a mechanical no parking flashing sign, but yet we have had to call them and they have told us that they will tow the cars. But what has been happening is somehow the people get word and they come and they park someplace different. Also, on my street, I live at the very dead end. I am getting cars parking there. My neighbor, who knows martial arts and is a very courageous person, comes out with the flashlight and says, you cannot park here. This is private property. You need to leave. And so far, there has not been an incident. But I don't know how long that's going to be. I think the BSO needs to be called again instead of him trying to handle things. McDonald's is also towing cars from those, from the Rock Center, the two restaurants. McDonald's has been towing cars. There is a sign on the Lemon Pot Restaurant, I believe is the name, that says, do not park at McDonald's because you will be towed. Now, we have this issue with this 275 apartment building coming in, suggestions to close 40th Avenue. There is no way that that is going to work. With all the problems that we're having, I wanted to suggest that we need more no parking signs. I spoke to a man who was parking on 54th Court. I said, you cannot park here. The sign, the mechanical sign is right there. You see it? He said, I'm not hurting anyone. And he and his family got out of a van and they said that they were going to the Lemon Pot Restaurant. They were, we called BSO and they moved their van before the cops could tow them. So we're having real problems and I would like to know, we are not And I would like to know, um, we are not sure as a neighborhood who we can talk to to post more no-parking signs in our neighborhood, including on the streets, the three cul-de-sacs, because people are parking on our swales, parking by our driveways. So I'm asking the board if they would know who we need to contact.
I think that would be our Public Services Director, and I see him over there writing some things down. So my guess is that he's writing this down? Okay.
Public Service Director?
Yes, Fernando. He's right there. Gentleman right there, he's gonna give you his card.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Hello there? Please state your name and address.
My name is Steve Goldberg, four-zero-one-zero Southwest Fifty-Fourth Court. I'd like to say that, uh, again, I'm for the development that has been proposed. I mean, we, we've been down the road with developments, uh, right directly behind my house. We're there knocking down the trees. I've called you many times on your cell phone. Apologize about that, but I felt it necessary at the time. You know, uh, at the end of the street, certainly for the short run, you can put what's known as a traffic Y. So when it comes out of the, uh, Hard Rock that they can't go straight, they can only, uh, go forward and reverse over into four-forty-one and allow the residents to make a right turn and allow a resident to come in. That can be done immediately. It's low cost, and it's effective. I have talked to the developer of, uh, of this particular, um, development. This is a beautiful development. When to close the street down, they've proposed to possibly putting on, uh, uh, certain stickers on our vehicles to allow the gate to go, to allow us to come on, uh, to the, to the property, and to have that street closed down. That street definitely needs to be closed down. I've been living there almost as long as these folks have. Uh, it was supposed to be Shady Ridge Two, but when the, uh, George Mazzola, you know, passed away, that never took place. So now it's turning, uh, when you allowed the development to be built behind my house, I think, uh, one of the commissioners who's no longer here has said, young man, that was, uh, that's, that's progress. Progress is gonna continue on four-forty-one. There is gonna be massive development. There are gonna be traffic problems. Waze will not change the algorithm. We've also wrote to Waze, it's just never gonna happen. The only way it's gonna happen is to put a traffic Y at the end of the street so people can partake in the businesses directly off the street and to the other, uh, you know, you know, projects that are gonna be going along that street. And secondly, at the end of forty-four, at the end of Fortieth, which will be on, it's, it's, it was supposed to be proposed at the end of my house. Not technically at the end of Fortieth, but the end of my house. My house is the house with the brown, uh, fence and the green gate, and, and so forth. I'm all for that. You know, I mean, I've seen kids get, almost run off the road. I've been out there, I've kind, uh, triaged, because I'm in the medical business. Many people flying down the street and getting into accidents. I personally went to the hospital, and I got run over on my street and had reconstruction of my knee. So, you know, it's something that needs to get done. The city's not, uh, obviously has shown their hand. The progress is gonna take place. We're the largest yacht basin in the world. We have Dania Point, and this city's gonna go forward. And, you know, Fortieth does need to be closed down. It just needs access for the residents that live there. I agree, we should get the access. You guys should grant, you know, access to the, uh, to us with a sticker on our vehicle to get to and from that street. It's simple enough. That device, I believe, from this gentleman's, uh, client, uh, has already, uh, lamented at the last meeting that he would do so. He's more willing to do so. And as far as to sit there and have a six-story project, it's beautiful. We have a, uh, we have a thirty-story guitar. You can't take away that, that visual effect. So, you know, might as well go ahead and have something beautiful in the neighborhood with high rents, and it's gonna change the, the neighborhood for better. Their streets, no disrespect to that street, but their majority of them are renting. These are the only folks here. You weren't here at any meeting for the last two projects. Not one meeting, not one social meeting on Twenty-Sixth Avenue. But now, you're going ahead and coming to the meeting. These are all renters, the majority of the people on this street, and hopefully that will change too.
Okay.
So, I thank you.
Thank you.
And also, Ms. James, uh, instead of bringing a knife, if you wanna be trained, certainly you can come over to the Tojo, and we'll help you out there.
I was trained from the hood.
Please state your name and address, and be limited to three minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Ari Fraser. I live on Thirty-nine, eleven Southwest Fifty-sixth Street, Dania Beach, Florida. Like many of these, uh, folks that spoke tonight, um, my family and I have been suffering tremendously from what we call the West Charos Development, which is the, the Hard Rock, um, and, and the development that that brings. But like, like Mr. Goldberg said, it's development. And, and the way that I perceive it, and many of my neighbors on the Shady Ridge side of the street, is that this is progress. And with progress, you have to come up with solutions to problems. You can't shoot down developers. The developer that, that, that we had last meeting a chance to meet and speak to is very motivated to find solutions to all the problems and the concerns of the neighborhood. He's actually proposing to do a lot of the development on his dime and to propose, uh, different solutions to people not getting cut off from Dania Beach. And, 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 and one of the proposals was stickers on their cars. This is a beautiful development. If anyone ever bothered to actually look at it, it's a beautiful, uh, uh, six-story building. That's, it's, it's a high-end building that's gonna have walkways and, and water features, and, and, and it's just a beautiful, uh, uh, proposal for us, people that live in the neighborhood, to look at instead of looking at that, you know, big monstrous building across the street from us and, and, and shaking on Saturday afternoon from the bass noise for coming from the pool. Uh, actually, this thing may break the noise, who knows? Um, this big project that's, that's there, and, and may protect us a little bit from feeling like we're living, you know, in, in the eye of, of the Hard Rock, um, but rather in, in an actual neighborhood. So, I'm for it. I was here last meeting. Many of my neighbors on my street were for it. We feel that there's solutions to the problems that, that, that these folks are raising. We do, I, I, if I was in their shoes, I would wanna hear that, you know, there's a developer that's motivated to find solutions and work with them to try to fix the problems. Nobody's proposing to cut anyone off of, of, of their neighborhood. It's just a little bit of open-mindedness, willingness to hear, you know, what the problems are, and this developer is motivated. So I'm for it, and, and I hope, um, I hope this passes. I hope this, this goes forward.
I was gonna call on you, Dennis.
Uh, thank you. Dennis Mealy, two-hundred East Broward Boulevard, representing the applicant.
A little closer to the mic, can't hear you.
Yes. Uh, Dennis Mealy, two-hundred East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant. First of all, uh, the item that is on the agenda tonight is simply to amend the text of the RM2 zoning district. It does not approve any development on any property. It doesn't approve closing any street. Um, we had a planning and zoning board meeting, uh, last month regarding the, uh, actual rezoning, which I believe is scheduled for your meeting at the end of this month, on the twenty-eighth. Uh, we have two meetings set up for next week. I talked to Ms. Perry yesterday, uh, and she asked that we have the meeting for the folks that live on the west side of our property separate from the meeting that we're having with everybody else. So I believe we're having a meeting on the twenty-first at PJ Melly Park, which is just the general meeting. And then, uh, on the twenty-second, uh, for the neighbors who are primarily here tonight. Uh, Ms. Perry was nice enough to, uh, say that she would help us, um, identify everybody else who could come, uh, so that everybody would be invited. Uh, we'll make sure that we send a copy of these meeting notices to staff in case anybody here wants to attend. But the bottom line is, when we went to P&amp;Z, uh, we heard that there was great concern from folks to our east along Fortieth with people cutting through the neighborhood. This is something that apparently has been going on for some time. I heard about the Waze app has people taken four-forty-one to Fifty-Fourth to Fortieth, down to Sterling or Sheridan. Uh, I, I don't use those apps, I just drive. But, um, we heard that was a problem. But then we also heard that night that putting in a cul-de-sac and closing the street would also be a problem for the folks to the west. So since that P&amp;Z meeting, we've had our engineers working on trying to find a solution. So all I can say is, tonight's vote just does what that board says up there. It doesn't approve anything. Uh, we'll be back here on the twenty-eighth. Uh, we'll have our meetings next week beforehand. And I'm hoping by the time we come back, we can have solved some of these problems. If we haven't, that's the point, when you're actually voting on the development itself. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Commissioner James.
Yes, good, um, good evening. I don't know if this is for you or not. I know, I, I have spoken with the developer. I've received a numerous amount of emails from people that are for and people who are against this project. And that makes our lives very difficult, and, you know, you kinda damn if you do, damn if you don't. You know, you vote one way, you vote yes to this, you vote no to other people, you vote no to this. You know, you're upsetting other, other folks. Now, I did speak to the developer, and I expressed the concerns about cutting off the access and putting in the cul-de-sac. And his reply to me was, we'll do whatever the commission wants. It's actually more expensive for him to put in the cul-de-sac. So it's not something that he just wants to do. He felt like it was, um, a benefit to the community. Now, I always go to my example when these developments come up because this has been the only example since I've been attending commission meetings and chairing commission meetings that I can look at as something that has been very successful as a model. The states of Fort Lauderdale and Charlotte's Lebota have gone through this process with Mr. Mealy and another client on a project they felt was too dense, too high, too wide, this improvement, that improvement. I mean, it went from infrastructure improvements to streetways, to redesigning the entire development. But my advice to the, the sibling communities, um, is to get together and organize. You organize, and you know what you want. Because I can tell you from sitting here, um, progress is going to happen with or without our permission and with or without your permission. The, the thing I want you all to take from this is being involved in the process and what's going, in what's going on in this community. If you look all around, these are private developments. These aren't things that the city is building. These are things that developers, uh, private developers are developing. So I would get any benefit from it that you can while you can. And maybe there could be a change in density. Maybe there could be a change in how the streets are made. You, you guys are complaining about that, but if they put something else there, like a strip club or something else, you're gonna complain about that too. So we can't, it's better to know what you have and that will be developed next to you than, than not having any control, than not needing any variances, any approvals from this commission. So, again, I don't know if you, I, I'm putting Charlotte on the spot. Go speak to her, she's back there in the back. I'm telling you, she has done a phenomenal job. And it took, it took like a year or so, maybe two years, three years, for it to come to a place to where it was like this. And in the end, the residents, all of the residents was coming here, please vote for this, please vote for this, please vote for this. It was crazy, I've never seen anything like that. But, you know, I want you to redirect your energies into being in control of the project and what's coming to your neighborhood. Because the developer has said they are willing to work with you all. They have two meetings that are coming up. And if you don't want the cul-de-sac, they won't put the cul-de-sac. But that was a very good suggestion. But this is what happens when you all get together, and you brainstorm, and you speak collectively as one unit.
Vice Mayor.
So sort of a, a similar sentiment to what Commissioner James said. Another example similar to what you were stating with, um, the estates in Charlotte was when we had the, the Sea Oaks, uh, property. I, I used to live there. They were gonna put up a, a big, a big apartment. Everyone was very, very upset. And some people started saying, well, we're not gonna go to those meetings because it's stupid. The developer's not gonna listen, he's just, you know, taking notes and, and is just paying lip service. Well, they sort of got back on it, and they continued to organize and go and go and go and meet with the developer. And so when it came back, the new project, I was shocked. They all were for the development. And I, I know you laugh, because it's hard to imagine, right? It's hard to imagine when you can't see the other end yet, when you're all the way over here in this end, and there's so many, there, there's the, the, the bus stop for your, for your child. That's not right, that's not fair. There's the feeling like you're cut off from the very city that you're living in. Well, that's not right, that's not fair. So it's so hard to see the other end of it where the, where you're living feels like home again, and it feels like you're not getting, uh, the losing end of the stick. But I, I would say that there are some really good examples of times where it worked out. And I, I would, I would implore you to not think that just because this part of it, the, the text amendment phase may go through, that, um, your, your, your duty is done. Um, and I would not walk away from this. I would do your best to keep your hand in it and to keep the control of it, and to keep us on your email and keep relaying how you feel about it, letting us know. And it's work, and it's, it's frustrating, I suppose, to even have to do that work. But as, as the commissioner and some of the others have said, this is how the progress goes. And, and so I, I hope you will stay involved in it, and I hope you will believe that you can really shape what that progress looks like. You're not gonna get everything you want, but those very important things, like feeling like the EMS can get there, your child not having to walk an extra bunch of steps, having to go onto four-forty-one just to get to, to the Dania Beach store, those are things, those are things that can be fixed.
Commissioner Harris.
Echoing the sentiments of Commissioner James and the Vice Mayor. And having been on the Planning and Zoning Board for many years before I was elected, and I met Mr. Goldberg many years ago, um, you, you are all doing the right thing. You're being here, and you're participating in the project. And not only are you participating, but you're learning something as well about land use. It's a process, it's a long, long process. And when you see that we wanna change the density to tw- to five, uh, twenty-five units per acre, that seems like a lot. But a couple of months ago, when we went down to downtown Miami, the whole commission, to see the Brightline Station and the development downtown Miami, the, the density down there is five-hundred units per acre. It goes up sixty-five floors. This is not Miami, you're right. But with Broward County in South Florida, and I see you looking at me, being one of the hottest destinations in the country, we have to continue with the density change. But this is by, I'm looking right at you. This is by no means an endorsement of the plan that we're talking about. This is just a text change amendment going forward. That's all, it's just words. What's that?
This is allowing them to develop it.
No, it's allowing us to look at a project for development. It, it doesn't allow it, it doesn't allow it. It's just a text change amendment. Land use attorney, can you explain what that is, sir?
Go ahead.
Sure, I'll be happy to. So, what this, what this change does is it lays the groundwork for future developments to come in and develop. It allows this particular, uh, text amendment, the, the maximum permitted density in the RM2 is already twenty-five. And so this text amendment would allow, uh, for the commission to look at increasing that number, um, in certain situations. So what will happen, if this, if this goes through, then what will happen next is the applicant will come in to seek a rezoning as well as a site plan. And that's where a lot of this is, is where your input, uh, the design, the configuration is all gonna come into play. This, this change doesn't approve the project, um, but it does allow the flexibility to look at projects in the future.
Did you wanna continue? Go ahead.
So, you know, and I, I see you out there, you know, kind of doubtful, but, you know, this is the process. And as Charlotte did with the states of Fort Lauderdale, you got involved in the process. Maybe you'll get something that meets, meets your, uh, meets your needs. I mean, you have to look at the progress and the way we go forward and the way we do things because we don't want anybody to feel neglected. We don't want anybody cut off from their neighborhood. And I see you out there rolling your eyes, but you have to feel like you're part of the process, part of the solution. I mean, I'm serious about that. I've been in, in planning and zoning for many years, and this is just a process. It's, it's by no means an end-all with this project. So please believe that. Get involved, go to the community meetings. You're doing the right thing by being here. I can't tell you that enough. You're doing the right thing.
Commissioner Brandon Marty.
Well, here's what I would do. Here's what I would do. If I was in your shoes, okay? This is only, like the mayor said, it's only text change. There's still another step that we have to prove or say no. But you're gonna come back again, you know that. This probably is gonna go through, let's cut to the Jason, and they got, you're gonna come back. Take advantage of them. Listen to me, because that's what Charlotte did. Take advantage with them. If you have to give up something, get something for it. That's how you play it, trust me. I'm eighty-three, I know something's here. So I'm just telling you, Charlotte held out for a lot of stuff, didn't you, Charlotte? Clubhouse, uh, this, that. So if you know that you're on that end of the slope a little bit, use it to your advantage. Don't let it happen without you getting something. Listen to me. But you will be back, and so will the ideas of where you'd like to see changes. And hold on to that. And hold on to that. It works. I'm telling you, it works.
I'm going to basically echo what everybody else has said, but I do wanna make one note. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, where you are located happens to be so close to Hollywood that a lot of the complaints that you're having and a lot of the issues that you're having really have nothing to do with Dana Beach, but have to do with Hollywood and the Seminole. And I know that you're aware of that because we've had this conversation before, but it is, it's a tricky situation because obviously we have no control over that. We, there's nothing that we can do or say. You can come to us and you can complain about it, but we have no jurisdiction over it. And the Seminoles are a whole different thing. And that's the Hard Rock and that's totally different and that's a, that's a whole tribal issue, yes. Federal government doesn't even deal with that. So, you know, it's, it is unfortunate that, you know, what you've considered to be your nice, quiet little community is changing so much. But I can tell you that this, the group of people that you're dealing with here are very open to working with you. And that's, you know, I've spoken with them as well and I know that they, they are willing to work. And Mr. Mealy has represented a number of, of different developers and he does make an effort with his clients to, to try to make the changes that you need. Nothing's perfect. Nobody's gonna be happy the way that you, you know, usually leave a negotiation is neither side's completely happy. That's other, if otherwise, something's wrong. So, you know, you need to, I would just ask you just to kinda take a step back. This is a process. There is time. And continue doing these meetings. Make sure that you keep talking to everybody and getting your points across. And you can get things like lighting. You can get, you know, parking. You can, there are things that you can, that you can negotiate with them that they will work with you on. Because if they really want this project, they're going to work with you. Okay?
Commissioner James? I'm sorry, City Manager first.
Yes, what I wanted to convey to, to our residents is, is not only to echo everything that was said by our elected officials, but not only have I seen it work here, but I've seen it work in, in other cities. I'm very concerned about what this young lady discussed in regards to somebody wanting to, to kidnap her and things like that. But when, when you're having negotiation, and I can concur what was said about Mr. Mealy because he's really fantastic, but lighting, landscaping, sidewalks, look at the, at the silver lining of this opportunity in regards to how could it enhance the community as a whole. So I just wanted to chime in on that. Thank you.
Commissioner James.
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna be at those meetings with you all. I'm, I'm gonna be there because I wanna make sure that your concerns are being addressed and, and that the conversation is happening. So I, you can count on me to be there to, you know, not to be a facilitator, but I, I just wanna show my presence, you know, maybe from this commission to show you that, you know, we all have been victim to projects happening and we, we've sat through and, and been a part of this other process as well. So I'll be there.
Is there anybody else here to speak for or against? Please state your name and address.
Christine Musial, 5414 Southwest 44th Terrace, Dana Beach 33314. I've lived there since 1988. I was at a meeting with Mark this past week and on the way home, I decided, well, I'm not gonna turn it for you. I'm gonna go to 441 and see how long it's gonna take me to get home. It took me an additional 25 minutes to get to my house. So I'm not happy with closing off 40th. And yes, we've had all kinds of problems out there. Russ couldn't be here tonight. The gentleman that she talked about who went out and tapped on the window, there were two men having sex in his front yard. That's what we're dealing with. Having sex in his front yard. And we're all pretty well fed up. We have people coming out of the garage and I know you can't do anything about it. We had the speed device up, 65 miles an hour. They're still doing it. So we need some help.
I'm just gonna add one comment to that. When these things happen, you need to report them.
I called.
Okay.
Nobody responded. Nobody called me back.
Okay, well, again, we have officers here tonight. You can make a report tonight. But it's important that you're, if something happens, whether it's personal safety or it's nuisance or anything, you have to make the report. Otherwise, they're not gonna know.
They took away our speed zone today. We don't have that anymore.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak for or against? Do we have a motion? Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the text change amendment only.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Text change amendment only.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brandomart?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odenman?
Yes.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 93, ordinance number 2020-003. It's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 28 Land Development Code, the City Code of Ordinances by amending Part II Site Development Regulations, Article 205, Tabular Summary of Site Development Standards for All Zoning Districts, Section 205-10B, PRD 1 in Multiple Family Districts to amend the minimum lot width and depth, maximum allowed height and coverage percentage, and the minimum interior or side rear and corner side yards for townhouses in the RM1 and RM2 districts, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Good evening. Corinne Lejoy, Planning and Zoning Manager. This application is, I'm sorry, this application is a text amendment that is initiated by the city. And this is first reading of that text amendment. Staff's proposing several changes to the development regulations for the RM1 and RM2 zoning districts which allow for the townhouse developments in those districts. The changes that staff is proposing really talk about the setbacks and the development regs for those and I'll go through what those are quickly. So what we're proposing to change is the lot width from a 100-foot minimum width to 125, the lot depth from 100 minimum to 150-foot minimum, the height from 35-foot maximum to 30-foot maximum, lot coverage from 40% maximum down to 35% maximum, interior side setbacks which are currently at 20 total and 10 for each side. We're proposing to increase that at 20 and 15 for each side and the rear 15-foot minimum to a 20-foot minimum. So these are, we're just increasing each of these setback requirements by a little bit. But what that, the intention is, is to, see, I talked about it already. It's in, an effort to preserve more open space between the neighbors, between the developments. As these townhouse projects come on, a lot of times what we're finding is that these proposed townhouse projects are allowed in the zoning districts, but they're often next door to single-family homes. So by increasing that setback, it's more in scale with the adjacent single-family homes and it increases the landscaping and the separation between the buildings as well. This is a text amendment and does require two public hearings, so this is first reading for this item. The Planning and Zoning Board also heard this item and recommending approval, recommended approval to the City Commission. Oops. And I'm available if you have any additional questions.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Any discussion?
Move the item.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brandomart?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Odenman?
Yes.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Tab 94. It's Resolution Number 2020-008. This is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, approving the site plan, SP 14519, variances, VA 15719, 15819, 15919, 16019, 6119, and 17519, and design variations submitted by Lee Robinson, Curran Associates, on behalf of Carmelat Hospitality One LLC for property located at 321 North Federal Highway in the City of Dana Beach, Florida, as legally described in Exhibit A, copy of which is attached to this resolution, providing for conflicts and further providing for an effective date. Mayor, Commissioners, this is a quasi-judicial item, so all testimony, including any public testimony, has to be made under oath or affirmation. So at this time, I would ask for anyone in the audience who's wishing to speak on this item tonight to please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you promise to confirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And also, if, Mayor and Commissioners, anyone who's had any communications with the applicant or residents on this item, if you could disclose those for the record.
I've met with the developers.
I've met with the developers and residents on this item.
I've met with the developers.
Hearing no further.
Go ahead, Corinne.
Good evening. Corinne Lejoy, Planning and Zoning Manager. This application is for a site plan approval. There are also several other applications for variances and design variations for the property as well. So I'll try to be brief, but I'll run through what those are. The property itself is in the City Center Zoning District, which is in the Regional Activity Center, and there's no open code violations on the property. The property itself is located on Federal Highway immediately north of the Holocaust Museum, so this is on the north end of Federal Highway. And it's the previous location of what used to be many, many years ago, a gas station. So in October of 2016, the City Commission did approve a site plan on this particular property with design variations and variances on the site. But the applicant is here today with a new site plan that accommodates some of that, the required cleanup and contamination or remediation on the site because it was a gas station, which is, is typical for previous gas station uses. This is the location of the site. I'm sure we're all familiar with it. Federal Highway is on the right side of the property and to the north, separated, this parcel separated from Old Griffin by yet another gas station. The applicant is proposing an avid hotel, so there's a rendering of what that structure looks like. There are several variances and I'll try to be brief, but go through them. Several of them are related to the parking lot and the, the design of the parking lot. They're asking for a variance regarding the valet parking to increase it to 13%, where code allows a maximum of 10%. The parking space separation, we require two and a half foot separation next to solid obstructions like walls. They're asking to reduce that to 10 inches, as low as 10 inches, I think, in one location. Driveway access, the code requires 25-foot width. They're proposing 20. And the perimeter landscape buffer around that parking lot, they're proposing a zero, zero landscaping on the west property line where the code requires five. The applicant is identifying the need for these variances in order to have a more efficient utilization of the space and that parking lot itself. It is a little bit tight and this allows them to maximize that efficiency. The two additional variances relate to street trees and street scaping. The, they're proposing to provide no street trees along Federal Highway, where the land development code does require the use of street trees. They're also proposing no street scape elements as the land development code requires it. The applicants indicated that FDOT won't permit the installation of obstacles to the visual sight triangles, which is kinda preventing them from doing these things. We're having a lot of difficulty at the moment working with FDOT. The applicant is still in negotiation with them because there's been some precedent set, like with the hotel to the east side of Federal Highway, I believe it's Comfort Inn where they did allow trees. So we're encouraging the applicant to continue to work with FDOT in hopes of being able to get some trees in that area because of precedent. But at this point, we're, we're having difficulties, which is arises the need for these variance requests. The final variance is with regards to wall signs. The applicant's proposing or requesting wall signs on the north and south building elevations. The land development code only allows wall signs adjacent to street frontages. There's only, the north and south does not have a street frontage, but the applicant's identifying the need for these signs at these locations in the order to capture the attention of the motorists traveling on, on Federal Highway. As you know, the land development regulations do have criteria identifying justification for variance requests. They're identified in the code, also identified in the staff report, and the applicants addressed how their requests are consistent with these criteria. There are also, the application is also requesting several design variations. The, the first is with regards to window area and the applicant's requesting to allow as little as zero window area on the north elevation where the land development code requires 15. The applicant indicates that the glass area is 0% on the north building elevation due to the Florida Building Code fire separation and avid brand standards. Now, this is an urban form-based code and so the building is very close, if not on the property line, which is what the code requires. But at the same time, the land, the building code prohibits windows when you're adjacent to the property line. So that's where we kind of are having conflicts and necessitates this variance request. The next is regarding the building design. The applicant's requesting to allow no cornices, limitations, or other material changes as required by the land development code. The applicant indicates that on the east, west, and south elevations do comply with the articulation, but again, the north elevation of the building, the one that's pushed up against the property line, really isn't meeting these requirements, but it is so close to that, that property line. It's kinda prohibiting some of those articulations and, and break in the facade with the use of windows as we discussed previously. There's also a requirement in the land development code for pitched roofs and overhangs where the applicant is not providing that based on the style of the, the architecture of the structure and they're indicating that they're trying to maintain the avid brand requirements in terms of design. Another design variation is regarding the solid wall. And again, this is the north elevation where we're having this difficulty because it is pushed up against the property line. And there's also an awning design variation where the applicant's proposing to provide an awning with a five-foot projection for 56, so almost 57 feet of the building frontage. The land development code actually requires a much greater coverage. It requires much more of the linear building to have that awning. They're hoping, the intent is to create a more pedestrian environment with a shaded canopy where the applicant, because of, of the design and the driveway being as large as it is, reduces the ability to provide that awning. That meets the code requirement. Again, this is the elevation, I threw this in, of the north building because this is the part that's the, this is the elevation that's dictating the need for somebody of these design variations, but this is the, the elevation that's pushed up against the property line. For design variations similar to variances, there are criteria identified in the land development regulations which the applicant is supposed to be able to meet. They've identified how they meet these criteria in their justification statement. The site plan is for a hotel, for a 101-room hotel with surface parking, which will be in the rear behind the building, so it won't be visible from Federal Highway. The applicant's proposing the use of incentives to achieve additional building height. They're proposing a six-foot, I'm sorry, six-story building where the code by right allows 35 to, I'm sorry, four stories to add those two additional floors is through the use of incentives. And at this point, the applicant is proposing to utilize sustainable building practice incentives. That is one of the incentives available in the City Center Zoning District. The project did go through the Development Review Committee on July 25th and in September. And as you know, it's made up of BSO Fire, Public Services, Landscaping, and Community Development. There are a list of criteria or outstanding DRC comments that the applicant still has to address. They've been able to address the most critical of those. The remainder are identified in your staff report and in the resolution should the application be approved. Those will be conditions of approval that would have to be addressed prior to the issuance of the building permit. I've included what the site plan looks like and as you can see, the building itself is, is pushed up along Federal Highway street frontage. This is that problematic north building elevation that we have so many design variations for. And, you know, the access point is on the south side of the property from Federal Highway. And, you know, the access point is on the south side of the property from Federal Highway. At this point, staff's recommending approval of the resolution for the site plan without, with the outstanding DRC comments as conditions of approval, and that the applicant, oh, is also asking for the use of the city seal in their construction fence screening, which does require approval of the City Commission going forward. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Vice Mayor.
Before I forget, why the city, why would they want the city seal that goes on like official?
Sorry, I keep getting that wrong. I'm gonna write it down.
The logo.
Yeah, I keep getting that wrong, I'm sorry.
They all always mess it up. The seal is the round, right, is the round thing and the logos. All right, so that should be fine. And then, I didn't understand the part about the trees. Why can't they put the trees on federal? It's enough DOT thing?
Because of the wires?
You can come up. Oh, whoever wants to explain it. I just, I don't understand.
Excuse me, for the record, my name's Lee Kerr. My office is at 808 Esasolos Boulevard, and I'm the planning consultant for the application. It's the DOT, they have new criteria that's requiring that you have limitations of what you can do, but we are committed to try to continue to work with DOT to see if we can come to some.
But what's the issue? Like, what on federal is the issue?
Well, it's when you pull out of the driveway and you look down, you look to the north, they call it sight triangle. And the whole frontage is part of our sight triangle.
So it's like a safety thing that, with the tree blocking the sight line of the rest of visibility.
And it can even be the trunks who get involved. And they're much more stringent than they used to be. I mean, they used to have some flexibility, and now, now, but we are, and we've talked to Mark and Corinne today about this again. I know it's a concern. It's a concern to us, too. We'd be happy to try to find some accommodation with DOT to the extent they allow us to do certain things, and we'd be happy to try to do that.
What are the certain things?
Well, try to put some, go back to them and see if they'll let us put in the street trees as they did across the street.
Or put them farther away from where the entrance and exit is.
Well, the problem, no, the problem is when you come out, our entrance, as you saw on the site plan, is to the south, and you look north, and the cars are coming south, so they don't want you to have any visibility blockage as you try to view, you know. It might be over, you know, it's probably overkill by DOT, but that's the way they operate.
Okay.
Is that it? Commissioner James?
Yes, Corinne, I have a question for you. Is this the same project that, that there was discussion about with the slope of a parking garage?
Yes.
That was the previous.
The previous one.
I know it wasn't the same.
Right. It was the same site, it was a different design, right, there was a hotel that incorporated a garage.
So this, so there will be no garage here?
No garage with this.
So what are the plans, again, for the cars? Is it just going to be valet?
It's a surface parking lot behind the structure. 13% of the parking will be valet, so there is some freestanding where you can pull in to the parking spot.
How many parking spaces?
I don't know.
66?
66?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Lee. Going back to the trees, is there something else that you can put there besides trees that they would allow? I'm just wondering if there's other types of vegetation.
Well, I think if it's lower, it'll be like, if it's a shrub or something like that, it'll be bushier. I think that might cause more issues.
Might still be an issue, okay. But you are still working with them to try to figure out something.
We'll go back to see them, yes. We'd be weird, we, the civil engineers have been there, but we can go back and talk to DOT again, see what we can do.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
No, I was just gonna mention about the trees, the different kind of trees, a lower tree or porticarpus or some other kind of landscaping, right? Would work maybe if they approved it, the DOT?
Yeah, we'll work with whatever we can accommodate, for sure.
Okay, because we can't have too many trees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Only when FDOT says so. But those palm trees that they planted 10 or 15 years ago were about that big around. Now they're like this big around, and they do obstruct the vision on, when you pull out of some driveways.
Right. Well, I've seen places that were, the trees are nice and mature, and then DOT comes in and cuts them out. I mean, it's just like, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but it happens. So the avid brand isn't a new brand that's coming into the market, and it's similar to a Holiday Inn Express, and they're very excited about getting under construction and the like. And I know while there's some variances and design variations, they are sort of clustered and related to certain elements about the site, about, you know, fire code and that type of thing, and your code does want the building to be oriented at the street, that type of thing. And we are going with surface parking, we have heard about the slope issues that there were with the previous project. And as it relates to the landscaping, we're up against the FEC Railroad, and there is a large green area there, and we even have indicated we'll try to go back to, go to FEC on that side and see if they'll allow us to put in some landscaping as well. So we'll continue to work with all those folks. On the valet part of it, we were, and as far as, there's a parking reduction plan in your transportation demand management schedule, and one of our reductions, we were gonna buy, pay into your parking fund, but since we put in that valet parking, so valet parking will replace, it's in Item 16, I think. The valet parking will handle the credit needed for the extra parking that we were gonna pay for previously. All in all, we think it's a really beautiful project. I'd show you more, some more pictures, but the same ones that Corinne already showed you, and we hope you gain your support this evening.
Okay. It's a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against?
Move the item.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brandemark?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Edman?
Yes.
Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are next up for discussion and possible action. First item is mine, infrastructure concerns. We all know what's been going on in Fort Lauderdale. We've talked about it in a couple of different meetings, workshops, what have you. Before that even happened, I actually started talking to my concern, talking to the city manager about some of my concerns about our infrastructure and the fact that we are the oldest city, and we do have the oldest pipes, and there are things that we need to be concerned about. So as part of that, what I did ask for was an assessment in writing that basically would give us an update as to where we are on all the various projects, status of them, costs, estimated costs, that sort of thing, so that we can get a sense of what it is, get a handle on what it is that we need to do. That includes lighting and things like that as well. They're all public safety issues in addition to things like sewer and drainage. And we know with that flood recently, which obviously was an extreme rain event, but at the same time, there were some parts of the city that were impacted much more severely than others. And these are all things that are just, they're coming to the forefront more and more, and the last thing we want is to have a situation like Fort Lauderdale has right now where there's raw sewage running down the streets. Not only is it unattractive, but it's also a public safety hazard, and it's a health issue. And so I have a copy of the memo that was just completed this week, and I want to hand it to each of you so we can all take a look at it. And city manager, did you want to add anything?
Basically, I just wanted to give you an update and make sure that all the rest of your colleagues had it in regards to what has been going on with the Public Services Team, with the new director, with our city engineer, of citywide assessments that we've been doing in all areas, from storm drainage to lighting, to streets and sidewalks and everything.
And I know that with lighting in particular, that was an area that you and I, both, we discussed this months ago. We took a ride around a few neighborhoods and looked at some of the lighting problems that were going on and took some pictures of them to try to address them. And, you know, every part of town thinks that they have the worst problems, and that, you know, and in some cases they do, in some cases they don't. I think every part of town actually has issues that they need to address. Some might be more with lighting, some might be more with roadways and paving, some might be more with drainage. And, you know, I just wanted to get a handle on where we are with each one, so that this way, as we're moving closer into budget time, we can start looking at some of these things and try to determine where we need to go from there. I don't really, it's not really something that I'm looking for action on at this point. I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware and all in the loop and thinking about this now before we get to the point where we're on the news with Fort Lauderdale and having to explain why we haven't replaced sewage pipes.
And if I may, Mayor, I think it also gives us an opportunity, whether we're in Washington or Tallahassee or working with the county, as we move forward with these assessments and these master plans, and also identifying matching funds in the budget, should there be grants available from the federal government all the way down to the county.
I'm sure there are. I'm sure there's opportunities for that. That's it, that's all I really wanted to, just wanted to make sure that everybody was on board and aware, because I'm sure none of us wants to have to answer to the public about why we haven't corrected the problems before they occurred. It's much more expensive to fix something once it breaks, as opposed to fixing it in advance. So it just makes more sense to me that we start looking at this now and start trying to. It's something that I know, it keeps getting put on the back burner, it keeps getting put on the back burner, it can't be put on the back burner. It's a crisis, not just here, but everywhere. Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you for this. I'll read this when I get home. This is something that we kind of touched on when we were at our Parks Master Plan meeting, and I think a lot of those issues could be addressed if that is the will and after the other plans that will come up with the different funding strategies for it, so, thank you.
Okay, next item is dune restoration. Vice Mayor?
Lauren Edman, Vice Mayor. Well, so, technology's not really working for me right now, but the two pictures that I have are, it's a comparison of the last 10 years of what the dunes looked like. And what I was trying to show you was, in the last 10 years, our dunes have gone from, so you can see right there, look how thick and lush and green and alive that dune section is. And if I was successful in making it work, I could show you what it looks like now, but several of you have been down there, and you've seen what it looks like. It's thin, it's chopped, it's not lush like that, and it's brown, it's, there's parts of it that are not even really still holding living ecosystems. And so I'm looking back at the, at the plans that we've had for these dunes over the last four years. And every time we have a big storm, or there's some article about how the parking lot is flooded and all the sand comes over, in that moment, everyone is very concerned and wants to do something about the dunes. And then, nothing gets done about the dunes. It's really, it's the barrier that's going to allow us to keep the beach, which is eroding at like five feet a year. Soon there will be no beach. It looks drastically different than it did 10 years ago. And you can pull up these pictures rather easily, and you can see, you can see the difference. Look at that space. If you walk down there now, you walk five feet, you walk off the thing, you're at the water. So we've talked about different ways of handling this. We had a Parks Master Plan workshop recently. There was some talk about maybe putting, bundling that in to address it then, but we keep putting it off and putting it off and putting it off. So my request tonight is, you know, this is not a problem that is unique to Dania Beach in any way. Depending how you look on it, there's, there's being answers that are being put out all over the different, all over the country, and different coastal cities are finding ways to address this. So my request is that I can work with city staff to have some of these meetings with FAU and NSU, which we're so lucky to be close by because they're doing some of the leading work in this area, and find what some of the best solutions would be for our city and what those cost options would look like, because I can't imagine it's that cheap, and come back to you and see if it's something we can consider doing now if you like any of those options, or if we're gonna just keep putting, I mean, you can look back in the articles from all the past commissions, from, you know, every well-intentioned commissioner who said, yeah, we're gonna do something. Oh, I know this is terrible, so I'd like to see if we can do something this year, if we can start doing something this year, because we know that nothing with this kind of thing is quick. And hopefully, some of those options would be, would be really good. So that is my request, to move forward with city staff on finding some options for you, pricing out what those options would look like, and see if it's something that you're interested in investigating as a commission. I'll be coming up back to the day after that, take questions.
Let's alight, sir Ron. Vice Mayor, you'll be happy to know that one of the things included in this memo is beach nourishment and the dunes. So, including cost estimates and potential, and potential grants.
Sure, there's different cost estimates, but I want to look at some creative ways to fix it. There was a viral post that went around Christmas where everyone wanted to put the dead Christmas trees on the, on the beach, tie them down, and that helps with the dunes. Well, we couldn't get that together in time because we had the flooding, but later I found out that wouldn't be such a good solution for our kind of problem. So I, we want to start sussing through these really innovative ideas because there's some really, really innovative ones that, you know, I didn't even, I didn't know existed, and looking to see, is that feasible cost, and is it feasible to do reasonably soon?
I'm gonna call on everybody in a minute, but I think that's something that we were kind of talking to people at the, can't think, up in Tallahassee the last time we went, and I know there's another Tallahassee trip coming up. Is that, am I forgetting something?
Yes, the moment that the Vice Mayor brought this, whenever you all bring something to my attention, we begin to look at what are the opportunities. We had this discussion when we were in Tallahassee with Commissioner Harris and you, Mayor. Last month, when we met with the city of Miami Beach, we talked about parks, we talked about a multitude of things, and that conversation came up. We definitely encourage, whether is, in this budget process, once we're able to get that appropriation, to begin to move forward, whether we do it all at once or we begin a multi-phase, addressing the areas of greater concern first with a goal of completing that project is very important.
Well, speaking of Tallahassee, I mean, I know you Well, speaking of Tallahassee, I mean, I know you and Commissioner Harris are going back to Tallahassee and certainly any opportunities you see to investigate this, I would hope that you would do so. I'm going to DC shortly. I will be certainly looking to make some relationships there and see if there's federal money that can help us. I've reached out to our local representatives to see what is the state of monies available for this. And I don't have the answer to that yet, but I would like to start doing the work now.
The work is in progress for sure. And our goal would be to say, hey, this is the area that's greatly affected. This is what it's gonna cost to do the entire thing. And this is what it's gonna cost to get started with the areas of greatest concern.
Commissioner Brandon Marty?
They brought all the sand in here. The first rainstorm that came took it back out again. You know, it's a losing battle there. However, the dunes are part of the phase, the next phase. Why aren't you just moving along with the phase that we adopted a long time ago? You do this with the dunes now, you're gonna have to re-break it down. Why? Because you're gonna fix the street down there. So it's like taking the taxpayers' money and throwing it away. You gotta do it in the way that we planned it out into different phases. Why aren't we in the next phase?
Well, but I think you just nailed it on the head when you said that. The plan from years and years ago, so intermediary to that, remember moving, removing everything back 15 feet?
Yep.
West, okay. So, intermediate to that, are there things to be done? Apparently, yes, there are things that we can do. There would be no sense in us wasting taxpayer money and putting out a whole mishegoss and then just ripping it out. That's most certainly not what I'm talking about. I'm saying, let's talk to, instead of us guessing, with none of us with an oceanography degree or in beach management, talk to those specialists and start that conversation and establishing those relationships so that we can have a really good plan for what we're going to do, because this is gonna keep getting worse and worse. It's almost to the point where we're putting the Band-Aids. Like you said, everyone was so happy about the sand. Why? What were you happy about? It washed away the first time, right onto the coast. It most likely, depending on who you talk to, did more damage than it did good. It wasn't a good thing. So, but we thought we were doing a thing, a good thing perhaps. So I just would like us to start those conversations and to really start focusing on what those solutions could be. And not starting to do the work of do, of the doing, but of the knowing, of the knowing what the right way is to tackle it.
I think it's way too soon to spend the money on the dunes until you finish the rest of the project.
Commissioner James?
Yes, well, I was one of the ones that approved some of us about the sand. And so, understanding that it was a time where we couldn't even get over the little overpass to even step on sand, I wouldn't say that our beach is worse off than it was before we got that sand. There was no place to even put a chair. Matter of fact, I still owe the City of Dania Beach an invoice for my shoe that I lost when I stepped over and put my foot back and it swallowed my shoe in less than five seconds. I mean, talking to environmentalists and talking about the sediments that go and they harm our reef, and that was a long process. I do, I do think a conversation needs to start, because you are right. It's not getting any better. And since I've been elected in 2016, we've still been in the same phase of the beach plan. And why, I don't know. We put funding towards it and then we, I saw all of these beautiful things of what it could be and all of these approvals, and it's still the same. I don't know what it takes to move it, but something needs to happen. But definitely, doing the groundwork is very important. So I do give my support on laying the groundwork for having the conversations and bringing certain people to the table who are subject experts so that we can get their opinion. But anything to where we're going to have to financially put out into it, I want to make sure that we are doing. Either we have to update the plan or we need to stick with what is there. But other than that, I'm all for having those conversations of with NSU. NSU and all of those facilities that may have different connections for us and it could help us out financially.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking, is to be able to start those conversations and then to bring some of those ideas back to you. And if you love them, good. If you don't, you know, then we'll just keep on keeping on as we have.
Commissioner Harris?
No, I just concur with everybody. Let's start the conversations and see what the technological advances are that will help us sooner than later.
And I would agree that we need to start the conversation. I'm just wondering if it makes sense to... I know we're actively working on getting the strategic plan setting done, and this might be something that would be included in that. Am I wrong?
Absolutely, but there was one thing here that was said that was very important. Subject matter experts. One of the things that occurred with those sand dunes, okay, is that we pulled out sea grape trees. We actually, we ourselves, because we didn't have the subject matter experts, actually contributed to the problem.
Yep.
We took out sand dunes that caused a lot of, we took out trees that kind of hurt the sand dunes. So, we're best going in the direction to work with the FAUs and those local universities that we're very lucky to have, like the Vice Mayor says, and move forward with the game plan and come forward to you in regards to what would be the proper order so we do things right.
And absolutely, to what you said, Mayor, about, you know, there's, I feel there's great value in that strategic plan. And wherever the commission as a whole ends up ranking this, you know, no harm, no foul, fine. But to at least begin getting those ducks in a row, wherever it then ends up ranking.
All these conversations that you guys are having are really like a prelude to your strategic plan, because you're already telling us what your priorities are, in a way. So, yes.
Okay. So, next? Okay. Next item, art in public places. Commissioner James?
Yes, I just wanted to offer a suggestion for the committee that we didn't talk about, putting together for this art in public places ordinance. And my recommendation, and I would love your all's input for us to collectively do it, but it would be a, what's this, one, two, three, four, five, six, a seven-person committee, comprised of two people from the CAC, however, they would choose their individuals. They'll be the only people with two members there. A chamber appointee, maybe Randy, or whoever she appoints. A CRA appointee, community development appointee, a Parks and Rec appointee, and maybe either a commission's appointee or the mayor's appointee, however you all wanted to do it, that's fine with me. But to make sure that these things are going along and that it is staying, you know, within the staff and the city here.
Well, my feeling on that is that we probably need to look to having this committee made up of the right people. And I feel that if we miss the mark on it, there's gonna be a lot of infighting and the things may not get done that we want to get done. So, perhaps what makes more sense, and maybe what you're saying is the answer, is to find out, like, what are the three best cities that have the most successful art in public places ordinance? What have they done to form their committees? Who did they use? Did they use people from their county? Did they use people from the cultural arts committees in their county or in their city? Did they use their creative arts council? Did they do kind of like what you said, let, you know, their commission pick representatives and then pick representatives in the city? I don't know what that is, but I would, I would think that would probably be the best way to go about it, is to find out what, you know, are you there, city manager?
Yeah, that's one of the things that I was eating over, as a matter of fact, apologies. I was speaking to the city attorney that's here with us, because he really took the lead in regards to putting this together. So you, so the key is having the right criteria of having the right individuals. So whether it's finding out what are the best cities, whether they're, you know, local cities or national cities. But I think, between everything that you all have said, I think that you are definitely going in the right direction here.
I also want to make sure that whoever does end up on a committee is going to show up, because we've had problems in the past with boards.
That's why I have multiple staff.
Yeah, I mean, we've had problems with people on boards not showing up. I mean, I just heard this weekend, I heard from the CAC about people that aren't showing up and from some other boards about people that aren't showing up. And that being the case, I mean, I think we're gonna need to make this be very...
Don't we just terminate them? If they're not, if you miss five, four, three happens?
Not all the boards automatically terminate. They have different requirements and sometimes they vote and sometimes they give people excused absences. I mean, it just depends. But, you know, there are issues that are, you know, constant. It's always happening. So it's just something we need to be wary of.
City manager, could you look into that for us and please get back to the commission and...
What, the way that they do it in other cities?
Yeah. I want to know that the way that they do it in maybe three other cities who are in our position. It doesn't mean no good to hear about what Coral Gables, you know, did. So, with new, a city that's similar to ours in size, has done with their new public, art in public places program, what did they do so that we can evaluate the degree to which it was successful?
And if you don't mind, I would like to work
Certainly.
with Attorney White
Because this is your area.
in regards to bringing you guys something using comparable cities, but best practices
Sure.
and how it has worked. So there's cities that have faced challenges, but cities that have also faced successes and have been able to move this forward, because I know how dear art in public places is to all of you.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Does that include wire art too? Like when they use...
Art in general.
Or just paint art?
Could be any kind of art.
Sculptures.
There's all kinds of art.
Sculptures, murals.
The new look in Fort Lauderdale are like, they're made out of tubing and all stuff like that.
Oh, if I may through the chair, there's even tot lots and recreation pieces and benches. There's a multitude of multi-purpose art that is multi-use as well.
I saw it in the children's thing. The art was a thing that they could even ride on.
So either, if we can come back by the next meeting with some type of a recommendation, because I just want to solidify how the process is gonna work and not just leave it to, you know, how it is. I do think it is best if you have control over who's gonna show up because of staff, because again, we do have issues there, and that was one of my main concerns from the beginning with this. But I definitely want to make sure, as developments are being approved, that we are not waiting in the queue because we haven't done our groundwork.
Without a doubt. That's very important. We would love to come back January 28th, but if we can just have a little wiggle room to, not to exceed the first meeting in February. But if at all possible, James and I will come back with that information for you on the next meeting.
Commission comments. Commissioner Brandon Marty?
I just want to thank Eric for getting on the thing, for getting the curtain out of Parker. I really appreciate it. And your event was very nice that you just had. It was fun, too. All right, that's all.
Commissioner Harris?
Just as a follow-up, in the State House, SB 1128 yesterday, there were no changes to the bill. So basically, it's the same, that we don't really have any jurisdiction about what goes over the short-term rentals. That's Airbnb, VRBO, and all the others. The vote was eight to three. So, our only local senator, Senator Gary Farmer, opposed the bill. And it says here, we're not gonna take any action, so it is what it is. So we can't really do anything about it, which is unfortunate, because we tried. The next thing is, is the articles that have been coming out lately, what I mentioned earlier, that everyone's coming to South Florida as the Sunshine State becomes number one, the one, number one moving destination in the US. So, there's a lot of people, estimated at 16 to 24 families a day moving to Broward County. So, housing stock being limited, there's just a lot of issues. As you've heard tonight, so, we in Dania Beach that sit up here have issues from the beach, from the ocean to 441. So, you know, infrastructure and everything, there's a lot, there's a lot to be considered.
Would you say about movie? I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's...
I'm asking him what he said about movie.
Moving.
Moving.
Oh, moving. I thought you said movie.
It says here, "South Florida cities such as Miami, Fort Lauderdale, and Boca Raton were among the cities showing the increase in the truck arrivals." And this study was done by U-Haul. So people moving their goods, themselves, from other cities to Fort Lauderdale, the Fort Lauderdale area. On February the 5th, there is going to be another meeting of the Part 150, the Noise Ordinance Programs, with the FAA and Fort Lauderdale Airport. So, they'll, we'll put a notification on the website for the next meetings. It's a public meeting. Anybody wants to contern that's having, that wants to attend that is having airport issues with the noise. And the sales tax conversations about the one penny sales tax, I think we're into our sixth or seventh modification of the inter-local agreement with the county and the spursing of those funds. We're on the project list. We should maybe get some funds by April, but we're not sure about that. It seems to be a work in progress. And then the red flag that came up last week was that the county's gonna take most of the funds from the city. So, there's a big battle going on there again with the county of Broward. So, you know, we just have to keep at it with the MPO and the Roundtable Steering Committee that I sit on, just trying to make sense with a team of attorneys and some elected officials on how the funds are gonna be spent and who they're gonna go to first. Because the one penny sales tax, which is generating millions and millions and millions of dollars, first goes to the state. It goes to Tallahassee first, and then it trickles down to the county. So by the time it gets to the, they issue a check to the city, there's not a whole lot left. But it's just something that we have to be cognizant of and we have to keep after. So, we're trying the best we can. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for staying, you know, staying for the whole meeting. I appreciate you being here. Like I said to you earlier, you're doing the right thing by participating. And I really appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Commissioner James?
Yes. I know you all have seen the beautiful signage, the entryway sign that has finally been up. I can remember being first elected and Commissioner Brandon Marty was like, "Put it there already," and cursing us all out. But I'm glad, waiting and doing it the right way, it's a very, it is no longer an eyesore. It's something that gravitates to your vision when you are going by. I just, one thing, on one side of it, the... No, it's the landscaping that's kind of covering, "See it, live it, love it," or something like that. From one side, I wrote, I said, "Oh, it's not this side." They must have cut them. And then I looked in my rearview, but I couldn't really look that off that much. But it's coming, I think it's coming, when you're leaving Dania Beach, when it says, "Come back soon."
Yeah, when you're going northbound and you're absolutely right, and we're addressing it with a landscape.
Yeah, I don't know anything about grass and cutting nothing, but, you know. Yeah, so I think it's beautiful. I do know that some of our parks have been marked. So I'm very excited to see the branding completing with our park signs. I think I saw some markers that like Dania Cove in another park, which, by the way, I wanted to request more BSO presence over there, because there are a lot of families there and there are a lot of issues that they are having there, which is a reason why I think closing our parks and opening them at a certain point in time. And I know we've visited Park Rangers and all of those things time and time again because of these safety issues within our parks. And especially Chesterburg Park, which a lot of people complain about, because there are a lot of activity that goes on there that prohibits the community and the children that really want to use that park. And speaking of parks, I know that tonight was the first meeting for the Youth Advisory Council, so I can't wait to hear the update on how that is starting and how that is going to be such an asset for our community. There is a sports clinic for any of those of you who care and want to bring your kids out. On Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, there will be former NFL players that will be present there. And I'm going to help with the basketball part of the clinic. Again, you have to register online with Dania Point, and it is, sorry, from 10:00 to 2:00. And I know this isn't a CRA meeting, but I want to remind everybody about the Dania at the Dark, the Super Bowl edition of it. I have, I have a few current and former NFL players that would be present there. I'm hoping that it'll draw a big crowd and everything that we have to offer here in Dania Beach would, you know, will be on display. So, I'm excited to see how that is working. One last thing, I want the community to be aware... Um, I'm excited to see how that is working. One last thing, um, I want the community to be aware of conversations that are happening about merging our two schools. And when I say "our," they're in our district. They're not in our city, but they're in our district, um, due to under-enrollment. So, they are planning to merge the campuses and the school board says to, um, reallocate resources. But, um, the community is, is really against it, so I just want us all to be aware and really attend those meetings because it not, it might not affect you, but it, but it might affect your grandkids or it might affect your children. I know, I know a lot of kids that live in Dania Beach that go to those two schools. So, again, this is, uh, about Addicks Middle School and Bethel Elementary that they're speaking on merging. And depending on where you live, that might be a district for your kids to go to. So, please be aware of the conversations that are happening at different schools, um, that may affect your kids' enrollment. And, um, thank you all.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you all for staying so late. Um, this weekend on Sunday, we held our one hundred and fifteenth anniversary event for the city. I see a lot of familiar faces that were there enjoying the brunch and it really, it was a, it was a phenomenal event. It was very fun because almost everyone I looked at, um, was our friends and was people who we see all the time. So, it felt like a big brunch with, with friends. Um, and your, your attendance was really appreciated and having everyone's support was really fantastic. Uh, the, the proceeds from that day went to benefit the Dania Beach Historical Society. Uh, one of the projects that we had worked on was that new, the, the mayors of Dania Beach that you see over there. It used to be a big slab of wood that was in code and it had all the mayors. So, it was really kind of cool that we were able to, to put that together, uh, with a lot of help from city staff. Um, I'm hesitant to, uh, you know, whenever, I think you know this about me, I am a very human and emotional person. And when you are disappointed in me, anyone, not just, not you, when you, any of you, you, when any of you are disappointed in me or our, or our decisions, I feel disappointed because I care about you and you're my neighbors and I see you at Publix. I, I can't get away from you. I see you down the street. I, I feel bad about your kid and the bus. I, I care about all of it. I care about all of it. So, if I disappointed anyone and and you didn't see my social media and you didn't see the mayor's social media and you didn't read the Dania Beach press and you didn't see the city, the city website and you didn't see the flyers all over and you didn't see the signage in city hall and you didn't come to the city meeting, man, I'm sorry and I'll try and do better next time and that's all I can do. Maybe I'll come to your house and I'll, I'll do door-to-door. I don't know. You must be sick of me by now. But really, if I disappointed anyone, I feel disappointed and I mean that and I'm sorry. Um, but I'm not sorry for the Dania Beach Historical Society because it's fantastic, it's overdue and it's going to do some tremendous, tremendous things. With that, thank you very much. Have a good night.
I will be brief. Um, first of all, Happy New Year. Um, haven't, some of you have seen, some of you haven't since the New Year. Um, some of you I saw on New Year's Eve. Um, uh, I wanted to first, there's two things I want to talk about. One, um, I know there is this sports thing going on at Dania Point this weekend on Sunday or on Saturday. Um, also, at Dania Point this weekend, Saturday, the eighteenth, between twelve and three, there is a job fair. It's a job fair for all of the, the businesses in Dania Point as well as the city is going to be participating. So, jobs that we have open here at the city will also be, um, there'll be somebody there to, um, let people know about the jobs that we have and the way that they can, uh, submit applications for those. Um, which brings me to, we need to really do a job fair for other businesses aside from Dania Point. So, um, I have talked to the city manager about this in the past. When I did speak to Dania Point about doing this job fair, they were very anxious and eager to do it and clearly did it very quickly because we just talked about it not too long ago. Uh, but obviously it's Dania Point and they do have their own interests there because they do have their own businesses there. But I would like to see at some point, we need to start talking about maybe doing a job fair for the other businesses in the city to see if there is some, something that we can hold so that we can make sure that all of our businesses are, are benefiting from this. Um, but that's for another day, but just to put it out there. Um, the only other thing I want to talk about was one hundred and fifteenth anniversary, uh, one hundred and fifteenth birthday party that we did have on, it was a celebration. It was a wonderful celebration and it did benefit the historical society, which is something that our residents have been asking for. Um, and it's, the historical society is something that's really important and it's something that, like I said, people have been asking for. We've had people that have been upset that there's been so much change and we haven't been paying enough attention to the history of the city. And this is an attempt to try to do that and try to address those needs. So, I for one thought it was an, an awesome event. Um, other than a couple of, of people, including tonight, who have made some negative comments, for the most part, everybody has had wonderful things to say about it. And it was advertised and people did buy tickets. I know there's a whole group of people sitting over here who I know bought tickets as soon as they went on sale. Um, and bought their own table, basically. I know of somebody else who went and bought a table for like six or eight people because she knew that the rest of them didn't go on the internet. So, she went and did that and then they all went to the, to the event. Um, I personally bought a few extra tickets. Towards the end, I waited to make sure that everybody could go and, and get their tickets, make sure the residents could get their tickets. Um, but I waited until the end. Um, and there were a few left and I bought a few more and I made sure that they went to people that either didn't have access to the internet or didn't have the money right now because they're unemployed. Um, but people that are from the city who live here and who care about the city. So, I do think it was a really good event. I think it was important and I think, um, it, it was, it was a really nice day. So, anyway, uh, I hate to see the negativity coming out of people that, that didn't, maybe didn't jump at the opportunity to go and, and buy the tickets. So, in any event, and there were a couple of people who didn't get to them. And the, the places, it only fit so many people and we told everybody that from the very beginning. But it wasn't that many people who were upset. Most people did understand if they couldn't get the ticket. So, in any event, that's really all I have to say. Um, thank you all for sticking it out with us tonight. Appointments. Complete Count Advisory Committee, anybody?
Nobody.
Okay. Creative Arts Council Advisory Board. I have one appointment and I am appointing Lily Shipper. She had just resigned. Okay. Yes, yes. Education Advisory Board. I don't have an appointment yet, but I should for the next meeting. General Employees Pension Board. Does anybody have any suggestions on that? Okay, we can bring that for the next time. Green Advisory Board. I have one appointment. I'm appointing Laura Lombardo, who is sitting there and she can give you her information. Vice Mayor, do you have anybody? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve these?
Make a motion to approve the appointments.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, administrative reports. City Manager?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, um, city residents that are here with us, watching at home and our city team. Um, we have hit the ground running in the new year, um, and, and our team just continues to, to come closer and have a seamless relationship between one relation, one department, um, and the other, excuse me. Um, our first ever, uh, holiday parks and recreation camp was a true success. Um, thank you to Eric and the rest of the team. Um, a, a great example of, uh, the fact that we are very proud of seeking, um, sponsorships and building relationships. Um, and every time we have an opportunity to save on taxpayers' dollars on any event or on any program or any endeavor, we do. Anthony from Parks and Rec just picked up the phone and called the Orange Bowl Committee and was able to get twenty-five free tickets for the Orange Bowl Classic. Um, and, and these are the things that we learned when we were in Parks and Rec because when they were cutting budgets, they were not going to cut public safety. So, very proud of the work that's, that's, that's happening and, and Anthony and the rest of the team, so please give him a shout-out. Um, EMS, our new EMS truck is, is up and running and thank you Chief for the relationships that we continue to build, um, including with, um, our county Broward Chief Fernandez. Um, brand-new truck. We haven't paid for it. It's a deferred payment, but, um, it's out there already saving lives and it's brand-new and it's long overdue. So, we're very, very excited, um, about that. Um, we will be doing, um, uh, very, very excited about this ribbon-cutting ceremony that's going to be, uh, upcoming. We want you all to look at your schedules, um, for the week of Monday, the twenty-seventh. Um, like Commissioner James alluded to, alluded to, we finally have what I believe to be the world's greatest entry sign. That, that, that corner of Federal and Griffin, you could see it, um, from everywhere, from the airport, as you're leaving the beach. It's, it's just a, a tremendous project. I'm, I'm grateful to, to Mark, uh, working with the manager's office and Kona in regards to, um, a tremendous landscaping project. Um, because not only is it a great sign, but it's a great, great, um, landscaping design. So, please let me know what, what day you are not available in times because it's very, very important. It's very historical. The week of Monday, uh, the twenty-seventh, um, we look forward within the, the, this week to be able to give you some, some dates and some information. I know how anxious you are in regards to moving forward with the strategic master plan. Um, we're also moving forward in regards to meeting with a multitude of cities in regards to moving forward with, with a really fantastic Parks Master Plan that was adopted, historical moment by, by this great commission. And just, we're very excited about everything that's going on and residents that are out there, anything that you need. Um, you have your great group of elected officials, but you have a very responsive group of city team and city staff. So, that concludes my report.
City Attorney? You're only here this week, so. Okay. City Clerk, reminders.
Having upcoming meeting Tuesday, January twenty-eighth at seven PM is your regular city commission meeting. That's all.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.